We need to buy the land from the Housing Authority and put a library in to add to what I'm already paying, quite a bit of money in city taxes, over 250 a year raises on a thousand square foot house, and I'm paying a premium to live here. And we want to see the neighborhood beautified, and the women and children taken care of, and a satellite library there, community garden, and also possibly community house. And that concludes it. So if you've noticed the beautiful picture of the woman in the back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have Josephine and Co.
Thank you everyone for having me here. I would like to say that what Mary was referring to is the HACSA-owned lot on Fortin and Acorn Park Street. It is scheduled to be the proposed site for a housing complex for 54 all-male ex-cons and ex-sex offenders, right in our backyard. And so we just want to let you know that a public project has been, I mean, there's a lot of public opposition about this. We would like to ask you, the Lane County Housing and Community Services Agency, the HACSA, to please look at the budget, and make sure no tax credits are being spent on this project, and that would hurt our vulnerable neighborhood. We also have a positive vision for what could be done with the project site, to actually help our low-income neighborhood. This is the kind of thing we would like you to prioritize in the Lane County budget. Sponsors, a nonprofit agency housing program for inmates, have proposed a campus, as I just mentioned earlier. This project would also include offices for two full-time parole officers, whose normal caseload would result in an additional 100 parolees coming through the neighborhood regularly for counseling. We were told 15-minute counseling, and they're not supposed to linger afterwards. While we applaud the work that sponsors does in the community, we contend that this particular project is proposed with the wrong location. While it admirably houses at these individuals, it leaves other vulnerable populations in our community to bear the brunt of the risk, a brunt they are not equipped to bear. As we said, the police have not been responding as they ought to. Instead of shoehorning and especially challenging group, plus additional convict services into this very dense area filled with children and youth, imagine developing a community center with a satellite library, as Mary had mentioned, to promote art and ecology, serve children after school, investing in the positive potential of Acorn Park families. We suggest that HACSA sell the lots backed on 1420 and 1430 Oak Path Road, back to the City of Eugene, to fulfill this need. Please refer to the news article in the Register-Guard dated April 23rd. It says, "No deposit in the city's budget." Rather than allow the city, county, state, and federal budgets to subsidize a well-intentioned but out-of-place project that would bring additional complications for traffic, wastewater, and emergency services than overloaded residential pocket just a few blocks over West 11, please do what you can to avoid greasing the wheels for yet another burden to the Oak Path and Acorn Park area. We respectfully submit this proposal to you, the HACSA board, and staff, Public Works. And so we thank you for your time. We did submit the 490 signatures last, the last meeting, so.
Thank you.
And to start.
Just one set.
The lighting, yes?
Yeah, we didn't have a stapler. Stapler. Thank you.
Okay, so we have Joshua Gillock.
Okay. Hello, my name is Joshua Gillock. I'm a community member. I've been a kids' sports coach for the last nine years. I have kids that attend USGA, or the National Academy of Artistic Gymnastics, right down the road from this proposed site for this HACSA and sponsor's housing. And it's a huge concern to me, in a community, in an area that is already low-income, and has a lot of kids who have fatherless homes, and challenges as it is, to have a place like this where inmates who could be potential sex offenders, and also have already had criminal histories, to be a block away from a city park where kids are going to be playing, is a potential danger. And also to be down the street from a gymnastics facility where little girls are in leotards all day long, is another potential hazard and potential risk to them as well, because as we know, if somebody goes out and is introduced to something that they've struggled with, it creates even more of a problem and a heartache for them. My concern for all these kids is to have to go through any more pain than they already have in their lives. And to put a place like this, in a community, in an area like that, is a huge risk. So I ask that you would really look at it, and see if there's something we could do, like they said, either a library, or something to help bolster. This is in the heart of where Churchill High School, Caesar Chavez, McCormick are right around the road from all these places. And it just doesn't seem like a good fit for a place for these people. I do believe they deserve a second chance, everybody does, but in an area where kids are prevalent, it doesn't make sense. So that's my proposal to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for your public comments. Okay, so then we're going to go on to Commissioners' response to public comments and our issues and amendments. All right, so we have a number of citizens here. So then we're going to move on to Administration, and Order Number 15-06-02-01-8, in the matter of accepting bids and awarding contracts for the weatherization of homes project, 15R-0050. And that would be, and Larry?
Good morning. I'd like to introduce Steve. Some of you, I think probably most of you don't know him, some of you I know do. Steve's worked for HACSA for about a year and a half now. He's had extensive experience doing weatherization, training. He worked for 15 years about at Community Services Consortium in Corvallis, and really has trained a lot of people who are running weatherization programs in the state right now. So we're very fortunate to have him, and he's just doing a great job in changing a lot of things for the better in our program.
I just talk about that to the HACSA. I'd say that the HACSA for probably a couple decades has had a very similar contractor. I think it's, as they say, that comes through here as a consent. Is that what it is? Because we have to change it. The biggest difference with this contract is that we're having the weatherization contractors act more as a general contractor, where before, we actually acted as the general and might have up to nine contractors working on one $10,000 job. So it was pretty cumbersome. Prior to doing this work, I was a residential contractor, and I sort of tried to meet that model, and it's consistent with what goes throughout the state. And it's really taking the numbers of contracts we have, and prices, and putting it into one contract, so that we issue a job to one contractor, and they complete it instead of issuing it to nine. Other than that, it basically reads the same, is what we've always done.
Can you tell us? Can we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just perfectly, I'd like to go from Steve to the campaign. I've known Steve for a lot of years. I go back to the tiny little years, years ago. And I've, I can witness your work through the years, Steve, and I know that you are an absolute master of this stuff, and always learn to make whatever you do, it's always been my style. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, then, all in favor of approving Order Number 15-06-02-01-8, in the matter of accepting bids and awarding contracts for the weatherization of homes project 15-R-0050?
I don't.
In the opposition? What's your best?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we now have a Secretary of Session, or can we have a business? Just like to, oh.
Thanks. Under other business, Larry, I was wondering if at the next meeting you could give us an update on this housing project with sponsors. You know, we've had presentations, and I'm not sure if the citizens have had a presentation from sponsors, as to the way the facility operates, their history. We've been presented, you know, information that is contrary to public comment that we've been hearing, about the risk level with these facilities. Also, you know, so I'd like to see if maybe you could bring that back to us at our next meeting, and make sure that the appropriate outreach is taken place in regards to the concerns. We've got some good testimony here that would be nice to be addressed. And then also, I was wondering if you had an offer from the City of Eugene to buy the property. It was interesting, at our last Board of Commissioners meeting, that somebody came and testified against the project that the city was telling them to come to the Board of Commissioners, when Board of Commissioners has nothing to do with the project. So I'm a little bit concerned as to, you know, what's the city telling citizens to do? You know, it has, you know, a month or so ago, we gave approval for bonds to be sold. I mean, just maybe a status to the project would be great.
Yeah, I could say a few things, Commissioner. As you know, that in several public meetings where we've talked about it, and particularly Paul Solomon from sponsors has, I thought, been very thoughtful, and talked about the issues, and you've heard a lot of that. I don't know if I'll be at another HACSA board meeting, but Jacob certainly will be, and I think he and Paul could both come back and address those issues. As far as the City of Eugene buying the land, it's the first that I've heard, and I don't know if anybody at the city is. It's kind of been interesting, as Steve Moklaheisky knows, when we put in the application to the state for tax credits for this project, we asked for letter of support from the county and the city, and Steve signed it. John Reese didn't at the end, and I'm not sure, I mean, he gave me some reasons why, I can tell you what. He and Gino got together and talked, and decided that they didn't want the sponsors' project to be the priority, even though it's the only one in this region this year, in case we did not get funded. They were concerned about our forthcoming project in Glenwood and Sixth and Oak, and maybe they'd want that to be the priority. And to me, I told them, you know, you can change your priority next year, and I'm very confident the project's going to get funded. If by some chance it doesn't, my recommendation would be to put it in again for next year. I mean, I, so I've been a little upset with the city for that, and I can't imagine them saying to come and talk to you about them buying the land. That's the first I heard of it.
Well, this is, this is the second time that this has come out, you know, the national interest. I served on the PSDC and became very informed with the sponsors program. In fact, it's, the state is the best program for reentry, and the state is the model, and that's the envy of other counties, and very supportive of it. I know that these projects, there's been housing projects in Village Grove that, you know, specifically that HACSA has built, that has had oppositions in the past, you know, for a common. And quite frankly, it's the nicest public facility in the neighborhood, and it's lifted the neighborhood up. So I want to make sure that the concerns are addressed, and that people understand what's going on. And I think at a high level, if people are, there's new phones lurking in there, then it certainly does rise alarms, but as long as I want to make sure that their concerns are being addressed and heard, and respected, and as we go through with the process.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing the points up. You know, back on January 27th, we had a public hearing at Val Coven Church on the project, and I actually have 32 pages of notes from that public hearing. We had a lot of public testimony that night, probably in excess of 50 people spoke that night. And it was, there was a mix. A lot of people had similar concerns that we heard today, and I know that Paul Solomon, Jacob Buck were there, they took extensive notes. Additionally, Chris Pryor from the city was there, I was there, Val Foyle was there. It was a pretty extensive meeting, it was a total close meeting. And I've taken the notes, and I'd like to thank you for being here tonight. I think, I don't recognize either of you from January 27th.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, there were the.
Neighbors did not get much.
It's the Acorn Park neighbors. That was the group that was there. So they were in a pretty strong force that night. So the concerns have been raised, and they're all absolutely legitimate concerns, and, you know, making sure that we have the answers. You know, I have a quote here from a parole officer who was there, and the parole officer's quote is, "These people are already living among you. When people are living in a project like this, they're under greater supervision than the other offenders that are already living around you." So I think I need to make sure that I can justify that quote with the concerns that the neighbors have, that, you know, that men living in an environment like this, you know, whether it's a parole office actually on the side. I think, you know, making sure that we're able to articulate responses to the concerns that people have. I think most of the responses have already been stated, but just making sure that people... It seems that on a project like this, no matter how many times you go out, no matter how many people are going to testify, we're going to hear from people who didn't hear about it. That's natural, that's normal. So we need to keep restating their responses to the concerns that were shared on January 27th. Thank you.
I would just, I'd just recommend, I don't know if either of you have gone to Roseville Crossing, sponsor's facility right now, the transitional facility, and if, I would really recommend, if you have time and inclination, to ask Paul to take you for a tour.
I've worked with people one-on-one from the office.
Have you?
Yeah, my concerns, however, it's not all the building, it's nice, it's a living nice, nice neighborhood.
Well, but it's the people there that you would get to interact with if you did a tour.
We just, we think about that, you don't like people from state, you know, people who might, you might consider this, using the years that this has taken, this is the national justice, that we didn't hear everything.
Yeah. Well, I think this next meeting, Paul and Jacob can really address that, and I'll make sure that happens.
So you moved along.
I would like to acknowledge that at the seizure last meeting, as President of HACSA and some Washington leaders, how much I personally have been enriched by your leadership, and HACSA. I've been privileged to have you as its director.
Thank you.
I understand this may be your last meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, then I would like to say thank you very much for your service to the agency and to the people of this community over many years, and just wish you all a new retirement.
I'd just like to dito that, Larry. 10 years I've been here, I know that started out with Chris, and then transitioned to you, but HACSA has been an incredible organization, and I know that your 30-plus years there have definitely made it what it is, so I thank you so much for your service.
Well, thank you, and I'd also like to say, HACSA's going to be in great hands when I leave. Jacob has done a great job, and will continue to do so.
Well, I would also like to thank you so much, Larry, you're going to be missed, and I thank you for being a mentor, and always being there, you know, to answer my questions from this meeting as a new commissioner, and on through, and you've done a great job. I'm going to miss you.
So Larry, remember, Larry, you and Dorothy were actually one of the first meetings I had as the new commissioner here, and I really appreciated that, when you asked if I would be available to serve on the Housing Policy Board. And I really appreciate that, but thank you for your leadership here for these years, and I think you're right, I think it's going to be in good hands. And I, by the way, that's a sign of a very, very good manager, when you can hand it over and he doesn't skip a beat. So I've learned that over the years, and that's a sign of top quality and from your respect, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Larry. When are you finished? What was your last?
July 1st.
July 1st. And I want to point out that you're working right up until the end. Yesterday you sent us a good, long afternoon at the Operation 365 homelessness, Veterans homelessness meeting. You were there the whole thing, and that wasn't, that was an impressive meeting, so just rest assured that he's not going to give up until the last second, and I bet he's not going to go away after that.
Especially with that issue, I mean, that's really important, and I've been working on it, and I'll continue to till July 1st.
Yeah, I'm beyond it.
Well, is there any other comments? Thank you, Larry. Thank you so much. And this meeting then, is adjourned?
I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to session right now. I know on the agenda it shows the Board of Health first, but I'm going to call the regular meeting to order first, so we can get the public comments this morning. We're having to juggle our agenda a bit this morning, because three of the Commissioners have been called to testify in a court case today, and we are going to have to recess at about 10:20 for those Commissioners to testify at that hearing, so. And I know that there's seven people that have come to testify to the Board, they've been waiting through the Housing Authority, so what I want to do is, I'm going to convene the regular Board of Commissioners meeting, take the public comments, response by Commissioners, then we're going to go back to the Board of Health. We'll recess the regular meeting, and reconvene as a Board of Health, and hopefully we can get through that before 10:20. We'll see. So with that, are there any other adjustments to the agenda besides the insanity we're going to have to live through today, juggling items to try and keep on schedule? If not, we'll move on to public comment, and you'll have three minutes for your public comment. If you'll state your name, the city you're from for the record, and then your three minutes will begin, and the first person I have signed up is Jeff, I always say this wrong, Leishman, Leishman, and that'll be followed by Charlie McKean, it looks like.
Thank you Chairman Bozovich and Commissioners for your time. It's good to see you all again this morning. My name is Jeff Leishman, and I live in Springfield. I'm here today in support of adopting the resolution supporting Second Amendment rights that will be discussed later today. Over the past several months, I've been in contact with each of you. I met personally with Mr. Lankin, and had extensive dialogue with Chair Bozovich in regards to this resolution. My position has not changed. Although we are in disagreement on the timing of adopting this resolution, we are, however, in agreement on the importance of it. Salem has refused to listen to the people, and heeds simple common sense this session, and passed law Senate Bill 941 that...
though there are only 13 states, they encompass almost half the population of this nation. So we know the laws work, and we're very excited that the legislature and the governor saw fit to pass and sign the law on effect. And I thought that the editorial in today's Register Guard, the rather heavily satirical editorial, kind of hit the nail on the head. You commissioners have got very important work to do. This is not your purview. You should get on with the county's business. Thank you.
Cindy Land, followed by Sue Willisack?
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, I'm here on behalf of the Lane County Republican Party. I'm Cindy Land. I'm the chairman, PO Box 10247, Eugene, Oregon. The Oregon Republican platform plainly states this party's support for the Second Amendment rights. It says under the heading of self-protection, and I quote, "It's an unalienable right of all people to use any reasonable and necessary force to defend and protect themselves, others, and their property. All citizens have the right to keep and bear arms in a manner of their choosing without government interference." This party strongly supports the resolution supporting Second Amendment rights with reference to SB 941 and requests you approve it today. This is a Second Amendment issue and another unfunded state mandate that continues to erode Lane County's law enforcement without any reasonable return in stopping criminals. The Oregon Legislature passed this unenforceable law with a feel-good title and shoveled the costs onto smaller jurisdictions like Lane County, requiring you to expect your taxpayers to pay the bill. As a board, you recently went to the voters for the Lane County jail for millions more tax dollars to compensate for some of these unfunded mandates plaguing this jurisdiction and that are eating away at our general fund. Your constituents, the taxpayers, made another sacrifice from their checksbooks to support you and public safety. On behalf of over 55,000 Lane County registered Republicans, we'd like to encourage this board to pass the resolution that references SB 941 so law-abiding can freely protect themselves using their civil rights guaranteed by our Second Amendment, which shall not be infringed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Sue, and then we have Charles.
Hi. My name is Sue Miller Willisack. Once you get on a roll, it's not so bad. I live at 2272 McMillan Street in Eugene. I pay about $10,000 in property taxes. I have no particular feelings about the ownership of guns. I've had my own 22 since I was 12 or 13. Really, I'm here with some questions. Mr. Bozovich and somebody named Willisack should not mispronounce anything that easy. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
That's correct.
As chair of this, is it your feeling that all the problems of the county are kind of solved and in place, sir?
This is public testimony. It's not a conversation.
All right. Then I guess my second comment is what I believe from being an attorney for 30 years, is that any resolution you make here won't change the U.S. Constitution. And second, any resolution that you make here is not going to change the state law. So my real question or comment is, what are you guys doing with my tax dollars? It may make you feel good to do this in front of all these fellows who want to be manly men, but you're just wasting my money that I pay to you to do the county's business. So please stop with the resolutions. They're useless. And just do the job you're getting paid for. Thank you very much.
Charles Hibbert, followed by Dwayne Taylor.
My name is Charles Hibbert, and I live in Lane County on River Road area. I'm opposed to, I want you guys to do this resolution, not because, I don't see that as custom. The lady just before me said, stop wasting the Lane County's dollars. I think with all these mandates that come from Salem and create expenses for our Lane County, that's already having a, has to balance their budget, is a bit unfair to the citizens of our county, especially if we have to pay the money to enforce something that's unenforceable. And I'd just say I support this resolution because it's an unenforceable law. It's a bad law. And I don't see that it's going to help criminals, stop criminals from getting guns. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dwayne Taylor, followed by Mark Cosby.
Thank you. My name is Dwayne Taylor. I'm from Eugene, Oregon. And I'm all for this resolution. I'm furious that Salem decided to pass this. And some of the reasons that they quoted in doing this is polls. But they never ever said what that poll was. I'm sure all you guys know how you can twist a poll, poll results. And they said 80% of the people were for this, but they never mentioned how it was worded. I think that's a trickery that we need to get around. I'm all for this bill. We are much safer. Once again, you can go and check out polls, and they give you how it's broken down, that you are much safer with guns than without guns. Think about it. Is somebody going to break in your house if they don't know if you have a gun or not? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Cosby.
Howdy. I am Mark Cosby. I live in Markle, Oregon. I've been a resident here since 1962. And I've never seen such a behavior in a legislative body as I've witnessed this year in the 2015 legislature, that they would pass a law that they come out and they say from the get-go on video, will do nothing to stop criminals from getting guns, that they will enact laws that free up criminals and they release them to re-predate on the public with their new laws. I'm astounded. But that they would make a law, the 23 sheriffs would not gave testimony to, that they would not enforce it, they couldn't, they couldn't enforce it. They didn't see how it could be forced. I've talked to many state police, and they were hurt. You could just see this, they were sickened when this bill was passed. And so for me, I've never committed a felony. They've encumbered my private property. And they have offended my sensibility in that they passed a law that the law enforcement says they will not enforce. As citizens, we look to standards and laws. And we make, and we're making laws when we know they won't be enforced. I really, I really question the mentality of a legislature that does such a thing. And our legislature did it in a single-party vote. And I went up and personally thanked the three Democrat legislators who did not vote for this bill. So I would strongly support the resolution. In fact, more so, I hope you make an ordinance that sends a clear message that we aren't servants to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw a couple people walk in after the comment sheet was collected. So is there anyone else that wishes to testify to the board this morning? If you want to come up and state your name for the record, and I'll begin your three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Mike McFadden from Eugene. And I want to speak about something a little bit on a different subject. But if any of you commissioners have the chance to go visit the courthouse in the near future, I would request that you stop at the first floor landing before you really quite enter and look to your left. And there's a dedication plaque to General Joseph Lane hanging on the wall there. General Joseph Lane is the namesake of Lane County. And as you read that plaque, I would like you to notice that it kind of glorifies and highlights Joseph Lane as kind of an intrepid pioneer who came here to help begin Oregon. And I think that the only mention on the plaque is that he supported, he was a staunch supporter of the Southern Secession movement. But I think that it's really important for all of us to remember that Major Joseph Lane believed that African-American people and people of African heritage were inferior genetically. He was a staunch racist. He also believed that Native American people were contemptible savages. And he proclaimed the Caucasian race's God-given right to make improvements on the land that he saw, or that he felt that they weren't making productive use of. And I really question or take issue with a plaque such as that, that doesn't really accurately portray the legacy or the history of Joseph Lane, especially in a building that's dedicated to providing equity and justice for all people in this county, whatever their heritage might be. So I would encourage the commissioners to, if they can, consider having a more accurate portrayal of the history of Joseph Lane included on that plaque, or at least have that plaque removed from the courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Wayne Lemler.
Good morning. My name is Wayne Lemler. I'm, I live in Demming Road in Elmira. And I'm the vice chair for Lane County Republican Party. And even though I am a devout Republican, this resolution is not a partisan issue. How do I know that? Let me read you a list to you that was provided by the Oregon Firearms Federation. Baker, Clackamas, Coons, Crook, Curry, Douglas, Grant, Jackson, Josephine, Jefferson, Clamath, Lake, Lynn, Malheur, Marion, Polk, Sherman, Telemach, Union, Wallow, Wasco, Wheeler, Yamhill. 23 Oregon counties have to date created either ordinances, resolutions, or letters supporting our Oregon citizens' right to bear arms to Second Amendment. Some of those counties are Republican, but many of them are Democrats. I might also add that the state Republican platform and the state Democrat platform both make statements supporting the Second Amendment. The Bill of Rights was written as a minimum requirement for you, for us to remain a free society. I ask you all to support Commissioner Bozovich's sponsored resolution, which includes the opposition to SB 941. All free and liberty-minded Lane County citizens will be in your debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? Seeing none, we'll move briefly through. Commissioner, lady in the back with her hand raised? Oh, okay.
Good morning again. I believe I met you upstairs, but I'd like to reiterate my speech to the board and to the citizens of Lane County.
Could you state your name through the record, please?
Joseph Inko.
Thank you.
We want to let you know that a public project has been proposed that has a lot of public opposition. We would like to ask you, the Lane County Board of Commissioners, to look at the budget and make sure no tax credits are being spent on this project that could hurt our vulnerable neighborhood, which is Acorn Park, West Eugene. We also have a positive vision for what we could be, what could be done with the project site to actually help our low-income neighborhood. This is the kind of thing we would like you to prioritize in the Lane County budget. Sponsors Inc., a nonprofit agency housing program for ex-inmates and ex-offenders, have proposed a housing complex on Haxa-owned lots at 14th and Acorn Park in the alley between Acorn Park and Opatch Road, offering permanent housing to 54 to 60 male ex-cons who have graduated from Sponsors Transition Program. This project would also include offices for two full-time parole officers, whose normal caseload would result in an additional 100 parolees coming through the neighborhood regularly for counseling sessions. While we applaud the work that Sponsors does in the community, we contend that this particular project is proposed for the wrong location. While it admirably houses at-risk individuals, it leaves other vulnerable populations in our community to bear the brunt of the risk, a brunt they are not equipped to bear. Instead of shoehorning an especially challenging group, plus additional convict services into this very dense area filled with children and youth, imagine developing a community center with a satellite library to promote art and ecology, serve children after school, investing in the positive potential of Acorn Park families. We suggest that Haxa and Lane County sell the lots on 1420 and 1430 Opatch Road back to the city of Eugene to fulfill this need. And please refer to a news article in the Register Guard dated April 23 entitled, "No Deep Holes in the City's Budget." We have the money to do that. Rather than allow the city, county, state, and federal budgets to subsidize a well-intentioned but out-of-place project that would bring additional complication for traffic... All free and liberty-minded Lane County citizens will be in your debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? Seeing none, we'll move briefly through-
Mr. Commissioner, lady in the back with her hand raised?
Oh, okay.
Good morning again. Um, I believe I met you upstairs, but I'd like to reiterate my speech to the board and to the citizens of Lane County-
Could you state your name through the record, please?
Joseph Inko.
Thank you.
Um, we want to let you know that a public project has been proposed that has a lot of public opposition. We would like to ask you, the Lane County Board of Commissioners, to look at the budget and make sure no tax credits are being spent on this project that could hurt our vulnerable neighborhood, which is Acorn Park, uh, West Eugene. We also have a positive vision for what we could be, what could be done with a project site to actually help our low-income neighborhood. This is the kind of thing we would like you to prioritize in the Lane County budget. Sponsors Inc., a nonprofit agency housing program for ex-inmates and ex-offenders, have proposed a housing complex on Haxha-owned lots at 14th and Acorn Park, in the alley between Acorn Park and Opatch Road. Offering permanent housing to 54 to 60 male ex-cons who have graduated from Sponsors Transition Program. This project would also include offices for two full-time parole officers whose normal caseload would result in an additional 100 parolees coming through the neighborhood regularly for counseling sessions. While we applaud the work that Sponsors does in the community, we contend that this particular project is proposed for the wrong location. While it admirably houses at-risk individuals, it leaves other vulnerable populations in our community to bear the brunt of the risk, a brunt they are not equipped to bear. Instead of shoehorning an especially challenging group plus additional convict services into this very dense area filled with children and youth, imagine developing a community center with a satellite library to promote art and ecology, serve children after school, investing in the positive potential of Acorn Park families. We suggest that Hax, uh, that Haxha and Lane County sell the lots on 1420 and 1438 Opatch Road back to the city of Eugene to fulfill this need. And please refer to a news article in the Register-Guard dated April 23rd entitled "No Deep Holes in the City's Budget." We have the money to do that. Rather than allow the city, county, state, and federal budgets to subsidize a well-intentioned but out-of-place project that would bring additional complication for traffic, wastewater, and emergency services to an or, or an overloaded residential pocket just a few blocks of a very busy West 11 thoroughfare. Please do what you can to avoid racing the wheels for yet another burden to Opatch and Acorn Park area. We respectfully submit this proposal to you, the Lane County Board of Commissioners. And we thank you for your time, Acorn Park community, for well-being. We submitted 490 signatures a couple weeks ago.
Thank you. So with that, um, we'll move on and I will ask commissioners if you could be briefed to any response to public comments or remonstrance. Um, we'll have other opportunity, um, when we get to this, to some of these agenda items later in the meeting. Commissioner Farr.
Commissioner Bozovich, I'm going to dispense with any comments and responses that I have at this point in time. We do have Dr. Lutke and other members of the Health Department waiting for their, um, their agenda item.
Thank you. Any other remonstrance or response? Commissioner, I can-
So, uh, Mr. Chair, first of all, I want to thank the folks for testifying this morning. And I will not be commenting until we get to the uh, what, what folks testified on. But I did want to make note that I thought it was pretty interesting and it seems like this is barely reported, but I thought this is important news that in the first quarter, uh, the economy in the United States actually retracted 0.7%. This is the third time this economy now has retracted uh, since the supposed recovery began in 2009. I find that extremely disappointing. And uh, so hopefully, uh, we can continue to work towards improving the economy here locally. We're working with our partners in Salem, which I don't see that, uh, working out too well either. And also our partners back in DC. Um, this, this is just completely unacceptable in my opinion. So I just want to make note of that. By the way, it's highly reported in New York Times, not the most conservative newspaper in the country either. So I think that that's, that's a piece there as well. So it's just unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to refrain from addressing, um, comments around the item 8B, uh, that's coming up on our agenda until that time. But I will thank everybody for coming down and I want to thank everybody for the plethora of emails that we've received on this subject. And regardless what our August, um, newspaper says, I think our constitutional rights are worth this board's time to discuss as well as unfunded mandates from the state and, and whether or not that's wasting county funds. So, um, not that I got to read the Register-Guard this morning, I had a few, few other things I had to deal with, like preparing for court testimony. So with that, what I'd like to do is recess the regular meeting and we're, um, until after, probably we break for this testimony in court. And then I'm going to reconvene as the Board of Health. So we are in recess as the regular board. And now I'm going to call to order the Board of Health on Tuesday, June 2nd. And um, I'm going to get back to my agenda here in the right order.
Commissioner?
Thank you. And I don't believe we have anyone signed up for a public comment to the Board of Health. So we'll, we'll move directly to, um, the semi-annual, um, Board of Health report. And we have Alicia and Karen and Dr. Lutke. So please.
Hi. Thank you, Chair Bozovich and Commissioners. Can I just do a time check? You need to leave at-
We need to be leaving here about 20 after 10. So we, we got, I'm giving, I'm giving everybody 10 minutes to clear security and get to the fourth floor of the courthouse that needs to be there.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the time today. With me, as you said, Karen Gaffney, I want to point out, Karen is our health administrator and Dr. Lutke is our health officer. Today, uh, you have in front of you our semi-annual report and we will not be reading that to you verbatim. What we have done is pulled out a couple of items we wanted to share with you. Karen is going to start talking about the CHIP and the CHA. And she'll explain, um, little intro there, get you all excited, wonder what we're talking about. I know you know what we're talking about, but she'll explain what those acronyms are. And then Dr. Pat is going to cover health indicators and CD, which has been playing big in our lives for the last number of months. So he'll do a little cover on that. And then I just want to touch base on a recent evaluation we had help with from the U of O. And that's also in the report, but I'm going to go a little deeper. So I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
All right. And our goal is to make sure that we allow enough time for your questions and discussion because you might have something different in the report that jumped out at you that you want to have some time to talk about. As you know, probably three years ago, 2013, so not quite three years ago, we adopted our first collaborative community health improvement plan based on a community health needs assessment. And as a community and as a board, we've been working really hard on our priorities as part of that plan. And the written report gives you an update on the five specific strategies that you adopted. Five plus one, uh, health in all policies. So I'm not going to go through each of those because we've been in front of you talking about a lot of those. I did want to give you a brief update, though, on our work moving forward in updating our community health needs assessment and the next community health improvement plan to give you a sense of what to expect and how you might engage. And if you want to give us any specific instructions as we move forward with that. So our goal is every three years to have an updated community health improvement plan. So in order to bring you a revised proposed plan next June, we have started our work on that process right now. The Community Health Needs Assessment is an effort to actually do four different assessments that will give us a sense of what the current issues are in our community related to health, what the future issues are that we need to be aware of, and then give us data that we can use to select priorities and build a plan. I want to thank Commissioner Bozovich and Commissioner Farr for participating in the first of those four assessments that took place. Out at Pacific Source, we convened a group of community leaders to talk about Forces of Change, which is really an environmental scan to look at the next three to five years out. What are those political, economic, legislative, scientific, technological forces that will influence our ability to improve health in our community? So we're almost completed with that assessment process. And as I said, that's the first of four assessments. There are three additional assessments coming up and I'd certainly want to invite any or all of you to participate in these as they come forward. And then, of course, the results of that will come to you in draft form for review and then in final form for adoption. So in addition to that Forces of Change, we're going to spend some time looking at community health status, which is pretty much the only assessment we did three years ago. That's where we look at the data and the health status of people in our community. The third assessment is on the public health system itself. And we are beginning that work to look at not only the strengths and needs for our public health department, but really that whole public health system in our community that works together to protect the community's health. And then finally, we'll spend time in a large assessment, many focus groups and conversations, looking at community themes and strengths. So we'll be asking you, as we get closer to conducting that assessment, if there are particular organizations or individuals you know of who we can send surveys to or convene focus group conversations with to really make sure we maximize community participation in this assessment process. And then I would expect late fall, we'll have preliminary results from that. We'll go on the road and get some feedback. Did we get it right? And then use that information to come back with community-wide collaborative priorities. So that's our plan, moving forward and updating our community health improvement plans. And while we're doing that work with the community, we're very much committed to continuing the work in our current plan. And I'm happy to talk with you about any of those items. I know you've been discussing them a lot lately. For the viewing public, I'll just state what your five priority issues are as a board before I turn it over to Dr. Lutke. The first is to really look at the tobacco issue as it relates to licensing tobacco retail outlets. And we're back in front of you later this month with the first reading on that ordinance and some amendments. The second was to look at local and state efforts to promote farm-to-school, both as an economic development strategy for agriculture business in this community, but also as an obesity prevention strategy for kids. The third was to look at the impact of adverse childhood experiences on that trauma that affects future physical health and behavioral health problems. The fourth is to expand the availability of behavioral health services. And you had an extensive work session on that particular issue a couple weeks ago. And then finally focusing on efforts to increase access to health services, particularly in the rural communities. We've been doing a lot of work on increasing access to primary care and primary care providers in general in the community. So I'm going to pause there and we'll talk about communicable diseases.
Good morning, Commissioner and Chair and Commissioners. Um, as Alicia mentioned, it's been six months of fun in our communicable disease program. I would call it joy. Others may call it something else. Beginning really with the measles case we had in January, which was the only Oregon measles case attached to what happened to Disneyland uh, in December, January. On the continuum of whether it's better to be lucky or good, um, I think we were pretty darn lucky that it was a, a middle-aged man, not a 14-year-old traveling in a bus full of kids. So we were very lucky in that regard. And part of that's important because, as you know, our immunization rates are not high enough to prevent us from having major outbreaks. So we were quite lucky in that regard. On the good side, we were good because we really responded quickly and we found out where that gentleman had been and where there was potential opportunities for spread of the disease. And we got the community involved quickly and did a very good contact investigation with our communicable disease team. I'm sure you are well familiar with meningitis and the situation with the university concerning the bacteria, Niceria meningitis. Many in the community think that we're out of the woods. I'm here to tell you we're not out of the woods. We had our confirmed seventh case last week. You've probably heard about that. We are at increased risk for ongoing transmission there for months to come, probably until the end of the year, although I can't predict exactly when that risk will go to zero or back to baseline. But this will go on for several more months. I would not at all be surprised if we had another case. That being said, we have a very good relationship ongoing with the university and we are working hard with the state as well to continue in preparedness and response to this outbreak. We've had several other outbreaks of concern that, again, reflect the fact that we have immunization challenges in our county. Uh, we've had several up, up breaks of chicken pox, which many people think is simply a fever and a rash. And for the most, the vast majority of people, it is, in fact, just a fever and a rash. Unfortunately, most of these outbreaks occur in schools. And if a pregnant woman were to get infected with chicken pox, in the first trimester, she can have malformations of the child. And in the third trimester, the child can die. This happens every year in our country, unfortunately in small numbers, but it happens. And our concerns mostly with chicken pox outbreaks in schools are the fact that the vast majority of our teachers are childbearing-age females and therefore at risk. So we do a lot of outreach to the schools and the principals around the importance of chicken pox. See, a single major malformation birth defect or a single death of a child is certainly unacceptable. Unfortunately, we've had two of those outbreaks. And trying to raise our immunization rates to prevent the spread is something we have ongoing work to do. We've had a good number of, um, the cruise ship virus outbreaks, norovirus outbreaks, unfortunately as well, uh, in elementary schools and middle schools. We have a good response team put in place to work with the various school systems on those. Unfortunately, those numbers are not going down. We also are seeing an increased number of those at long-term care facilities. A couple times in the last year, actually, we've had large outbreaks in a long-term care facility where a number of persons were sent to the hospital and the hospital was overwhelmed, such as in Florence. And they had to go on divert. They had no more beds. Um, that's, this is a, a area of need for us because if we have something simple like a diarrheal outbreak, closing the doors of one of our hospitals to other urgencies and emergencies and putting ambulance services on divert to other hospitals, that's a problem. So we have ongoing work in need in this area as well. Uh, I'll finish up with two others. One we don't talk about much and one you've heard a lot about. The one we don't talk about much is TB. Uh, we thankfully, the realm of tuberculosis, are not a high-incidence county, or I incidentally state, which is a wonderful thing. Unfortunately, tuberculosis, uh, numbers continue to smolder. Uh, we have another new case at a group home just over the weekend. Several other people exposed. And as you likely know, and I think you may have heard me say before, tuberculosis treatment is a challenge because it takes typically nine months to treat people. We have to watch them swallow their pills every day. It's a huge amount of work. So one case is a lot of work for our communicable disease team. That being said, we have a situation, or we have a, a system in place to address this thus far. And if we have a huge outbreak, we'd probably be back before you saying, "We're a little bit nervous. We need some more resources." But thankfully, we're doing okay with tuberculosis now. Finally, sexually transmitted diseases, and this will transition me to the health indicators. You've seen me here before talking about chlamydia, gonorrhea, and syphilis and other wonderful diseases. We have not made a huge improvement in the numbers of any of those conditions. We've seen a bit of a stabilization, but our numbers are still quite high. Uh, under the health indicators, you look under chlamydia, you'll see that we're 430% above the national average for chlamydia. Our gonorrhea rates have increased 400% over the last three years, despite the fact that our population during that time has increased approximately 1%. Uh, these are real numbers. These are not people moving here with disease. These are not students bringing it in. Uh, this is a real challenge to us. Transitioning to the health indicators, beginning on page 13, I'm going to highlight four of them. First, the leading causes of death. You can see throughout the country, um, there have been four leading causes of death for forty decades. It has been heart disease, cancer, stroke, and lung disease in that order. In Lane County, about a decade ago, uh, cancer started passing. Heart disease as the number one. And part of that is because our tobacco use rate is too high. Now, that's no surprise to you. You've heard this before. But the cancer rates are too high and the vast majority of those unfortunately are due to smoking. Immunization rates, as I alluded to earlier, we're hoping to see in the next 12 to 24 months, a improvement in immunization rates tied to what happened in the 2013 legislative session of Senate Bill 132, which, um, included mandatory education, going online, seeing a video before parents could opt out their children for immunizations. So we hope over the next year that those numbers will get better rather than worse. Uh, we're crossing our fingers on that one. On the next page, uh, the percentage of adults in Lane County who smoke, again, I've alluded to that. I want to point out one thing. Mostly due to the fact that more and more people have cell phones and fewer have landlines, the survey data that we use that used to be all landline-based has changed. So the, the statistical modeling has changed a bit. So you'll see in 2013, our numbers bumped up. It wasn't as if a huge number of Lane County citizens started to smoke again. Its statistical modeling had changed. One other point I want to make about this is despite the fact that our rates are not terrible, they're still too high. But it's important to pull out the Medicaid population, which are about double. So, um, under the old ranking system, 18% of adults in Lane County use tobacco. And 37% of Medicaid patients use tobacco. And you know, that's money that we pay for out of our coffers as, as the public. We have a long ways to go in that population. And then finally, I'll just finish with obesity. Uh, indicator number three on the bottom of page 14. Unfortunately, we are not sitting out the global obesity epidemic. We wish we were. We have a lot of people active in this state. We have a lot of, uh, things tied to Tracktown USA and running clubs and biking, et cetera. But still, we are not sitting out the obesity epidemic. Um, and that will have long-term ramifications to us in terms of diabetes and heart disease and other costs to our healthcare system. So we are looking all through the CHIP and the CHA at these sort of chronic diseases such as obesity and smoking use. And, um, those are major, um, forces or major initiatives for us going forward. I'll stop there. Thank you.
So last thing I'm going to do, and I see we've got about 11 minutes, so I'll go quickly, is to, uh, cover our evaluation we did for health in all policies. If you remember, you passed that last year. And we had the fortunate, uh, we were fortunate to have students from the University of Oregon's Masters of Public Administration come and do this evaluation for us. So I want to thank Tiffany, Christopher, Holly, and Lisa. They looked at the health of all policies and they asked the research questions about implementation, policy effectiveness, and the cost of the policy. So, um, their methodology was to look at, uh, department, survey departments, uh, who put in the, um, board orders and satisfaction with technical assistance. They also looked at effectiveness, and this is my favorite thing that they did. I have to share with you. They reviewed your meetings. So they looked at the month of January because, uh, they were on a timeline and it was the first month that it was fully implemented. And they looked at your video. They watched every one of your videos uh, in 2013, 2014, and 2015. And they thanked you for the entertainment, I'm sure. And, and they looked, they tracked discussions around health. And so, um, what they, um, so then they also, so that's how they looked at effectiveness. Then they looked at, they analyzed the cost. A couple of, uh, findings that I wanted to, uh, share with you. Well, actually, I just want to call out the fact that under, uh, some of the findings under implementation, uh, they called out the technical support proven, uh, provided by the Lane County Public Health Prevention Program was satisfactory to the Lane County staff who used that technical assistance and who chose to use that access. So I want to, uh, thank our staff who did that above and beyond their regular jobs. I want to cover the effectiveness on, um, when they looked at your board meetings. And I know I'm covering this at a very high level. know I'm covering this at a very high level, but if you want more detail, we have, we certainly have that. But I think this is where we need to put our energy. They had a key theme that said, when it is apparent that the checklist tool, and if you remember, there's that checklist tool, or you know, they write about health implementing it. They write about health and all policies. They look at the health and how it affects the policy they're putting forward, and so they write about that. As you know, on your board members, Karen will sit over here and give you a clearer understanding of it when I'm done. Their key theme was, when it was apparent that the checklist tool was used to write the health, to write the health section, the Board of County Commissioners discussed the health determinants and potential impact by that project. So the more work the staff puts into the board member, the more work, the more discussion we see coming from you all. And so that's where we're going to look at putting our energy around working with our staff to do a better job, if you will, at writing those, those around the health policies. I do want to say, public work staff was one of the, they did call out that they had some really excellently written cover memos, board memos around that. And so we'll look to bolster the training and provide public health staff to help with that training, staff throughout the county around, around the work on the health. And I'm going to let Karen jump in with what I missed. Did I miss anything?
I think, I think that's a good place.
Excellent. It's a good place. And so, like I said, we've got the whole report, if you would like to see it. Given the time, we have seven minutes for you guys to ask us questions.
That's Commissioner Liken and Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things, and really centers around the, so Item 2 originally up here, oh, the, second, scrolling, 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 scrolling. Okay. So Item 2, "Support local and state efforts to promote farm-to-school, farm-to-institution, school garden nutrition programs and other efforts to promote availability, purchase of local fruits and vegetables." Have you worked with Sarah Case at all on this, and if you can maybe provide an update on that? And then the other piece related to this is the obesity rate. As you look at, especially when you look from 2007, or no, excuse me, lunch program. That's, so that's the program I was looking at. So when you look in '07, we were about 40%. Now it's hovering about 55%. And maybe your assessment on why that continues to increase, because that's, that's pretty problematic. So Sarah Case in the first, and then the free, the free lunch program.
All right. I'll start, Chair Bozovic and Commissioner Liken, on the priority you had around promoting farm to school. We absolutely, from the beginning, when you adopted this as a priority, our staff, in particular Connie Sullivan from our WIC program, has been lead for H&amp;HS, has been working with the staff from Economic Development, as well as the staff from Intergovernmental Relations, and Alex Kyler, to really make sure that we can leverage all three of those parts of the county to move this forward. So yes, absolutely, working with the work that Sarah's doing. I am not in a great position today to give you a detailed update on where that is, but I can certainly get more information from Connie for you.
If you could just provide, you know, more information, even just email us, which is just fine, and then, and I'd appreciate that.
I am happy to do that. And do you want to talk about free and reduced lunch?
So Commissioner, are you concerned that the, the number is going up?
Yes. I mean, the rate, the rate's gone up dramatically. I mean, if you go 40% 2007 to 55% today, that's, that's a significant increase.
So it's hard. I'm going to try to, I can't take the school board hat off on this one, so I'm just going to own that a little bit.
I appreciate that.
We absolutely are seeing that happening in our schools, and we are seeing more of our schools going to Title I. We're seeing a high, that increase in free and reduced lunch. And we're actually working to make sure that we continue to provide that to students who need it. So one of the places you probably know falls off drastically is in high school. And so trying to make sure that those students get a healthy choice, and how can we help adjust how we do school lunches and make sure our high school students who don't tend to sign up for that, we get them signed up and we get them those lunches, because we're seeing, what we're seeing is they aren't getting the food they need. They may, you know, have a bag of chips for lunch, and they aren't. So how can we provide the healthy lunch? And included in that is the opportunity for them to get reduced costs for their SAT tests, for their, if they play sports. So there's a lot wrapped up in, in providing them the opportunity to sign up for free and reduced lunch and trying to remove that stigma. So looking at grab-and-go lunches, healthy lunches, that you don't have to go into the cafeteria, because no one goes into the cafeteria, but you can grab a lunch and go hang out with your friends off campus. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I'm just going to be excited to see one day if that number starts dropping.
That would be.
And I think this should be our ultimate goal.
It would be wonderful. You're absolutely right.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Dr. Lutke, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned it a little bit on the meningitis, but of course, I've been getting, I thought we were maybe beyond it, and then I get an email that says, no, wait, confirmed. So can, maybe you just drill down on the time that, is it, it's definitely multiple months, and you know, what are people carriers of this that keeps it moving around? What's generally taking place that maybe we can encourage people to do to arrest it quicker? I'm just curious.
So we actually know a great deal about this bacteria. Nicerium meningitis is its name, comes in multiple seral groups. The outbreak seral group on our campus here at the University of Oregon is seral group B. And it's one of the two most common that we see in the United States. And this bacteria lives in the nose and throats of people. And an average of 4% to 7% of us have it in our nose or throat at any given time, which in our county means 15,000 to 25,000 people are walking around with it. And since we have very few cases, obviously, most people beat it, and it's, it's no longer being carried in their nose and throat over the course of time. In a typical scenario, if the person has a normal immune system, so they're not immunocompromised, they don't have AIDS, they don't have chemotherapy for cancer, their immune system is functioning well, they will carry it in their nose or throat for a few months. We call it a self-immunizing action, where your body will see it over the course of several months, and eventually will defeat it, will make an antibody and get rid of it. That can take three, six, even nine months, and then it's gone. The highest risk is when you first come in contact with it. So within the first week or two, when it first colonizes you, that's when your highest risk of getting disease spread and then a life-threatening illness. So the vast majority of people are floating around in their mouth. If they don't have any severe disease in the first week or two, they're just going to be a carrier for a time, and eventually it'll go away. Now, in terms of when our risk will go back to zero, we tend not to say that. We say when it goes back to baseline, because the risk is never zero, since we have carriers at any given time in every population. So working with the Centers for Disease Control, their meningitis branch, they have a dozen people who their entire life is to eat and breathe and sleep meningitis every day for the country. We can't say that the risk goes to baseline within six months after the last case or two months after the last case. We don't know. I would estimate, based on what I saw during my years in the Navy, when we saw a good share of outbreaks in boot camp and barracks and other similar institutions where there's a lot of people close together in living conditions and stressed, like testing in students, that if this is our last case, number seven, by the end of the year, our risk will probably be back to baseline. I would be surprised, as I mentioned, that number seven is our last case. We've only gotten about half of the students vaccinated. The best way for us to prevent this is to get vaccinated, because we're, there are carriers, and carriers are going to continue to expose people. So again, we're lucky that most kids are going to go home for the summer break, and there'll be less exposure, but I suspect we're going to have another case or two. I can't predict, but I would not be surprised. Thank you.
And the plug I would add in terms of things we could advocate for while students go home at the summer would be a great time to get their vaccination. And the vaccine is available at pharmacies throughout the state of Oregon, and we're working with the state public health department to get information to U of O current students and incoming students about across the country where they can get that vaccine. So that's a great summer project.
So I've got two commissioners in the queue right now, Pat and Pete, but we are at the mercy of the court, and, and I'm going to ask the commissioners if they want you guys to return when we come back from our recess to continue this questioning or, or not, because we, unfortunately, we're, you know how courts are.
I can do 30 seconds.
Very quick, okay?
Very quick. Of the five areas that you list here, we began to talk about obesity. I'd like to mention that on Wednesday, excuse me, on Thursday of this week, we'll be discussing the ongoing efforts to get a farmer's market, a Lane County farmer's market in the downtown area. Largely, farm-to-school kind of hinges on people growing the product. Right now, Tom Hunt is doing a great job providing Bethel Schools and other schools with farm-to-school food. There's a lot to be said online about it. There's a lot to be said at the OSBA convention last November. Bethel School District was featured. Four J's doing great work also. So it's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Solingsen.
All right. So at this time, I'm going to recess, actually, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Health, and we will come back as the regular board after we complete our, our court testimony. So we are adjourning the Board of Health, and we will reconvene as the Board of Commissioners as soon as we get completed over in the courthouse.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, June 2, 2015, back to order. We recessed earlier after a public comment, and I want to just real quick ask the commissioners one more time if there are any adjustments to the agenda, because we kind of went real fast past that, and folks didn't have an opportunity to pull anything from consent calendar if they wanted to. So are there any adjustments to the agenda beyond the craziness we've already done? And I'm also hoping that we might be willing to stay a bit into lunch hour, see how much of our morning agenda we can get complete prior to breaking, and we have two public hearings and a work session scheduled this afternoon already. So with that, is there any emergency business?
No.
Okay. Move on to consent calendar, and these are routine items that are considered under one motion without discussion. Folks want to see detail, they can go to our website and click on the view material to see detail of each item. Is there a motion to approve the consent counter?
Moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. And moving on, County Council, we don't have need for exact session. Any other announcements?
No, Chair.
Then we'll move on to County Administration announcements. Mr. Mokrahiskey.
Ms. Chair, I have a couple of announcements I'll share with you that I, a couple of weeks ago had, every month, we're doing lunch with the county administrator in different departments, and had an opportunity to have lunch with our community health center staff, and it was a great opportunity to meet with some of our providers and staff at our community health centers and hear from them about the great work that they're doing. On average, our primary care providers see about 16 patients per day, so a significant workload for our staff there. And of course, many of the patients that we see have challenges, both in terms of health challenges, physical health and mental health challenges, and so the integration of care that we're seeing in our community health centers with behavioral health specialists and primary care providers in those clinics is really a wonderful asset, I think, for our community and for our residents that access those services. I also had an opportunity last Friday to meet with the Eugene Chamber Local Government Affairs Committee and shared with them our, an update on our budget process, as well as the results from, from the election a couple of weeks ago, and I had a good conversation with Eugene Chamber and shared our thanks and appreciation for their continued commitment to working with Lane County on solving challenges. We met yesterday, and Mr. Kyler will talk when he gives his legislative update about, obviously, the work we're doing in Salem, but we met yesterday as a region with our united front partners and our federal lobbyists to talk about how to, for next year's united front effort, to work with our partners to streamline the book that's put together and really focus on key, the key priorities as a region, and, and trim down the number of asks that we're making and really focus on, on the top priorities. And so we had a big discussion around economic development as a primary focus area and how we can fit the different initiatives that all of our organizations are focusing on around economic development, and a particular focus on 2021 as being a critical year for our community with the, the World Track and Field events that'll be hosted here. And so I thought it was a really good discussion, and just wanted to share that with the board. We'll have more discussions in the future, and I think Mr. Kyler can add, add to those comments in his update. I'll leave to Commissioner Farr to address the Veterans Homelessness meeting that we had yesterday, but I thought it was a really productive conversation of community leaders from Eugene Springfield, and there was a council member from Vanneta that was in attendance, nonprofit business, and government representatives throughout our community focused on that really important issue. And finally, I wanted to make a comment. You saw a story in the paper on Saturday, and we did announce last Friday that we've hired a new public information officer, Devin Ashbridge, and there will be an opportunity for all of you to, as I know the commissioners have met, Ms. Ashbridge. Previously, we'll have an opportunity to introduce her to you and to the broader community in the coming weeks, but I wanted to take a minute just to, to recognize Anne Marie Levis, Funk Levis, Anne Marie Levis, Trevor Steele, and the staff at Funk Levis, who for the better part of the past two years have served as a contractor, but really have been a part of our team here in Lane County before I got here, and has, Anne Marie and her team have helped shepherd Lane County through some really challenging times over the last couple of years, and I wanted to just make note of that and express my appreciation and our collective appreciation as an organization to Anne Marie and her team for the great work that they've done in getting good and factual information out to our employees and to our residents about the important issues that we face. And we've done a lot of things over the past year that we're proud of and continue to build on open and transparent government. And I won't go through all of those, but Ms. Levis and her team have done at the foundation of those efforts, so I just want to thank her. And there will be more opportunities. She'll be with us through, through June as we transition, and we're looking for a really smooth transition period here and, and to continue to build upon the success for internal and external communications that we've had. So with that, I will gladly take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Mokrahiskey? Seeing none, then we'll move on in the agenda. Item 7B, it's a report, an update from the May 29 legislative committee meeting, and we have Alex Kyler, our Intergovernmental Relations Manager. Mr. Kyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Alex Kyler, your Intergovernmental Relations Manager.
If you can turn the mic right towards your mouth.
Thank you. So this is an update on our last legislative committee meeting, and there were a couple things on the legis, on the agenda for that meeting. One was united front update, as Administrator Mokrahiskey indicated. There's a number of bills that we took up and had a conversation about, and then finally, a report back on, an update on sick leave laws that have been undertaken up in Salem. So sorry with you, Mr. Chair. I'll just go in that order.
Okay.
As Administrator Mokrahiskey indicated, we did meet yesterday with our united front representatives from around the county and with folks representatives from around the county and with folks from Smith, Dawson, Andrews. This is the sort of fulfillment of several meetings that staff have had after our trip to DC in February, and immediately starting to look forward to the 2016 trip. And I think each year gets a little bit more refined as we gather our thoughts for how we best present ourselves in Washington, DC. Just the very broad overview is that, in the old days, we used to go to DC primarily to seek earmarks. Those were directed spending by members of the congressional delegation, and there are just a plethora of projects around Lane County that were funded by earmarks. When earmarks were banned by the present administration, the whole scenario for the United Front changed, and we shifted to a more policy-oriented emphasis with our trips to DC. And in fact, I think we were fairly successful in that effort. We had a number of initiatives that were part of that that actually did result in legislation being passed and signed by the President. So we're feeling pretty comfortable about that. But we continually struggle with these meetings in DC where you get a limited amount of time with an elected representative or an agency. And so the ability to get your message across in a very concise manner is absolutely required. What we're trying to do now is, even though we've been going into that, trying to be more and more focused with our book of priorities, it's still a pretty broad book. It's still got quite a few different kinds of priorities in it. And so what we're proposing for 2016 is to really focus on what we're calling the Rivers District. And the Rivers District is something that came out of the HUD grant. You'll recall the HUD grant that we were able to secure about four years ago, that's a, was a project called Sustainable Communities Planning Grant. And one of the things that we did in that project was to identify what we called a catalytic project. The project that we identified really starts at the federal courthouse in Eugene and follows the river clear upstream to out Sealy Loop and South Franklin Boulevard there. So we've called that Rivers District from the courthouse clear down to Goshen. And so you can sort of think of the projects that exist there. There's the redevelopment of the courthouse property. There's improvements to Franklin Boulevard. There's the Glenwood redevelopment. There's the work that the Nature Conservancy has done out at Howard Buford Park, as well as the Friends of Buford Park. And then we've got the work that we've been doing in Goshen in terms of upzoning the unincorporated area there to urban levels of industrial development, along with wastewater infrastructure examinations. So that's where we're really focusing our efforts for 2016. And there's a couple of specific projects that at least the county, I think, is contemplating with respect to Goshen, including the wastewater development, including some freight rail issues and some freight transportation issues, especially related to access. And I think that was, you know, sort of the basis of our conversation yesterday. We did, however, also talk about, look, there are going to be other federal issues that the county is concerned about. We've got a very large health and human services exposure for federal dollars and federally-supported healthcare facilities, so we can't ignore that. We've got an issue that we brought last session about primary care doctors and residency programs that I think is maturing, but has not been solved by any stretch of the imagination yet. We put on the, I think we still have conversations ongoing with the Cuspe Rail Link and how to best get that line fully improved. We've got a couple of road projects that are, I think, very important to us, including territorial highway and Highway 126. This whole concept of the tech industry and what does it need in Lane County to continue to thrive, I think is an important question and issue that we should bring in front of our federal delegation. The housing first issue of how to best provide for folks who need a leg up in our community and who are struggling with addiction disorders. And then finally, a question of the transportation bill in its entirety. Probably when we get there next year, that conversation will still be ongoing about how to find long-term funding for a transportation bill in Congress. So we've got these, we've got a focused issue, along with some other stuff that exists on the peripheral. And the question is, we'll focus those issues around the Rivers District in a book, and we'll bring some other stuff related to these other priorities. Obviously, Smith, Dawson, Andrews works for us year-round, so we focus on the trip, but we've got another, you know, 51 weeks out of the year that they're available to us. So we've got ample opportunity to work on those other priorities. So I think I'll close it there and see if there's any questions about federal issues and our federal priorities, how those get, how those evolve.
Any questions for Alex on the United Front and the federal priorities? Keep going.
Okay. So moving now to the committee meeting itself, where we discussed pending legislation, we really narrowed down to four issues. You know, we're in the end game here in Salem. There is a lot of activity going on even as we speak, but constitutionally, the session has to be adjourned by about July 12. I've heard as early as June 20. I don't buy into that prediction, but I'm thinking first or, you know, early in the second week of July, it'll all be done. There are conversations now going on, especially about agency budgets and how to get those out the door with the resources that they now know they have. But there were a couple, there's a couple of policy bills that I thought were important. We ended up with four. Senate Bill 663, Senate Bill 822, Senate Bill 129, and then we lumped into sort of a category of about four bills, Measure 91 issues. So the first one is Senate Bill 6663. This is a bill I think you've probably heard a little bit about. It has to do with licensing of retailers who sell tobacco or what are now referred to as inhalant delivery devices, e-cigarettes is what we call them. And that bill was, we thought it was actually going to be worked on Monday. They had another hearing on it this morning. It got rolled again till tomorrow because of some technical fixes that apparently are still necessary. But we think that the most likely amendment, in case you want to go look at it, it's an A-13 amendment. And I think the most significant thing about the A-13 amendment is that it does contain a local preemption. The local preemption is, I think, pretty comprehensive. We have some questions about how it would interact with something that's already been passed. So it's a prospective preemption. And so there's sort of a question about, well, does it need to be, look at where there are ordinances already existing around the state, which there are a couple, including Lane County. That may be the topic of the technical fixes that the chairman announced this morning that were going to continue to be worked on. So the, you know, the position as of Friday from, the recommended position as of Friday from the Legislative Committee was to continue monitoring the bill. Obviously, it's of some importance to Lane County. But the idea being is that a retail licensing structure will be functional to a potential tax on e-cigarettes especially. Likely, the existing tax on tobacco products is done at the wholesale level. The thinking in Salem is that for taxation of e-cigarettes probably happen at the retail level. And so having a structure of licensed retailers will be functional, should that effort make it across the finish line this session. Next bill was Senate Bill 822. This bill requires grand juries to record proceedings, and with the exception of deliberations in voting. The district attorneys have come out in opposition to this bill. You know, unfortunately, there is no funding mechanism for it. There is no appropriation in the bill, and there is a lot of money that would have to be expended, not just in recording and recording equipment, but you can imagine that both sides of a trial will request those recordings, those will then have to be transcribed, listened to, and then transcribed into written documents, and that's going to take up some attorney time, a fairly significant amount of attorney time. So that's been the primary emphasis of why there's been opposition to that measure, is that it's not coming with any funding. So the committee recommended that we oppose that bill. Senate Bill 129 is an issue that is of really high importance to Washington County, but has some implications for Lane County as well. Essentially, there was a bill passed back in, back in 97, I think it was, that established what's called the Strategic Investment Program with an element called gain share. And the idea behind this was that a local government that waives property taxes to attract firms to their area, which Washington County has done significant amounts of that, should get reimbursed for that effort through the income tax system. And so there was a bill that established a sort of a repayment of 50% of the new jobs created from that investment to the local government. And Washington County has been trying to get the legislature to honor that law since, for about the past three sessions. They have made a lot of amendments to that program or proposed amendments to that program, and essentially of about $190 million that would be generated through gain share revenue over the biennium. They've come up with a proposal that peels off half to the state government, right, to general fund, and then half to local government. And within that local government portion, they're proposing to take their portion and actually allocate it to state school fund. These are statewide programs, state school fund, career and tech education, and OSU statewide service programs, particularly extension services across the state. And then keeping of their half, about 95, so they would normally get about $95 million under this program, they'd keep just $38 million, and that would be distributed to the taxing districts within the county. So the actual amount that even goes back to Washington County is a fairly small percentage of what is actually due them in a way. But it's come under, a lot of conflict this session. Washington County's proposal was countered against a proposal from the Speaker of the House, and so it's really pitted what became, it's actually Senator Devlin's Bill 129, so it's sort of a controversy between the Speaker of the House and the Senate co-chair of Ways and Means. So I think we, safe to say that we'll probably see this thing as one of the last bills out of the building. But what I think is important is that it showcases a really good representation of a county willing to work with its state partner. It's, they have, like I said, they have really narrowed down what would actually come back to the county in favor of three very important statewide programs. CTE especially is one that, you know, has no real stable source of funding, and the amount of money that Oregon invests in CTE pales in comparison, for instance, to Washington. So this is an important piece of that. And so the committee recommended support Senate Bill 129.
Mr. Chair. Real quickly, so on this bill, I just wanted to clarify that I personally, as Sid Lichen, Lane County Commissioner, and I made sure Chair Dyke understood this, that this is not coming from the board, but from me personally. But I have been very supportive of this, of what they're doing in Washington County, and have written letters to not only members of the legislature, but our local delegation in supporting this bill, but I also made sure he understood the Lane County Board of Commissioners had, at the time, had not taken this up in support. So it was just coming from me directly and personally on this issue, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks. And then finally, on Measure 91, it's sort of a confusing story, but I will see if I can distill this down. Essentially, Measure 91 initiated, was an initiative, but a legislative initiative. So it's, the legislature has the authority to futz with it, if you will. They formed, the leadership formed a joint committee on Measure 91 implementation. And the committee spent a lot of time focusing on, in fact, medical marijuana, because the advice that had come out of the state of Colorado was that Colorado felt like they had missed their opportunity to really wrap their arms around the medical marijuana industry and create a regulatory framework. The concern is that surplus from the medical marijuana growers goes out into the black market. And so trying to get a handle on that system will be functional in terms of implementation of a recreational system. Unfortunately, this joint committee was unable to come to an agreement about how to best move forward. And so the Senate President created a new committee that was only consisted of Senate members, and they passed Senate Bill 964 on a vote of 29 to 1. The controversy within the committee and what is contained in Senate Bill 964 has to do with providing local governments the ability to actually opt out. If you recall, when we came back from the full session in 13, or short session in 14, I can't even remember, but medical marijuana was, counties and cities were presented with an opportunity to opt out of that system for one year. It was a one-year moratorium you could take. The issue there is that local governments still are in fear that they're implementing a state law that is in direct conflict with a federal law. And so what sort of liability exists for that local government in doing so? So there was some strong feelings that there should be another opportunity to opt out of the medical marijuana system, and that's what's contained in Senate Bill 964. Counties and cities have the ability, if they act within 180 days of the effective date of the bill, to actually do another opt-out of that system. However, it will grandfather in anything that was existing under the old law. So if the board shows they could opt out of further medical marijuana dispensaries and growers, any sort of licensing, but what is on the ground today or actually has an application in that's deemed complete would be grandfathered in under this bill. So that's the controversial piece. It doesn't appear that it has a clear path through the House, so we don't know if that language will stick. But I think it's an important question that the board contemplate, is how do you feel today about this system and whether or not you should opt out? My understanding is that the bill that will implement Measure 91 is House Bill 3400. It will likely contain that same question of whether or not there should be a local government opt-out, period. Again, dealing with this question of, does the local government feel like it's really in jeopardy based on the federal law that does exist for regulation of a controlled, you know, essentially, we've legalized a controlled substance, it's a Schedule A drug under federal law. Schedule I, yeah. So one related bill is House Bill 2668, which is the hemp bill. What else can I tell you? Oh, a big question also about, you know, sort of the implementation date of Measure 91 was July 1. There is talk about pushing that back because there will not be recreational marijuana that is legally available on July 1. You won't be able to legally grow it, and you won't be able to legally sell it. And so this question has a potential solution of saying, why not let the medical, existing medical marijuana facilities sell recreational marijuana for some period of time? Or delay the implementation of Measure 91? Both have pros and cons, and that question has not been answered yet as well. So clearly, we've got about four weeks to get some of these things answered, but it's still an ongoing story. So that was the extent of our discussion there at Legislative Committee, Mr. Chair. And I think what we've done in the past is, you've given us a motion to support or oppose suite of bills, and... or oppose suite of bills, and turn it back to you.
So before we get to a motion, are there any questions of Alex on the state legislation? Commissioner Sorenson?
Is the county position on the grand jury bill included in this report?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair and Commissioner Sorenson, it is. The committee recommended that we oppose that measure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to support the committee's recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to, once again, Ms. Mokr Haisi, I'd like to compliment Mr. Kyler on the hard work that he does during the legislative session. He's intensely involved. I've witnessed him working, I've witnessed him running from, from committee meeting to committee meeting, literally getting there out of breath, having to catch his breath before he can testify. So it's, I think, I'm, it really makes me proud to see you working up there, Alex. And I think the way you carry Lane County to the legislature is highly commendable, something we all should be proud of. Thank you very much.
And hopefully, we can get you there by 1:30.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, real quickly, and I also want to say ditto on Commissioner Farr's comments to Mr. Kyler, but also to Sarah Chinskey, who really does extraordinary job in the research, and I really appreciate the team we have in place on that. So Alex, thank you very much. And Sarah, if you're listening, thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. And I'd just, you know, echo their comments, but I want to add one thing on Senate Bill 22. It's not just about the cost of setting it up, and it's not just about having to distribute transcripts on it. It's about the chilling effect recording grand jury would have on victims and people being willing to testify to a grand jury. It's not just about cost. I want to make that clear, and the DAs have made that clear, I believe, in theirs. And that's, it's as much about that for me to take the opposition position as it is about the cost. And the unfunded mandate, once again, from Salem. So, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1, with Commissioner Sorenson in opposition.
So then, the last thing that I have for you is just an update on the sick leave law. So this morning, the Joint Subcommittee, the Joint Ways and Means Subcommittee on Human Services adopted Senate Bill 454 as amended by the A39 amendment. So I think the 39 should give you a sense of how much back and forth there's been on that bill. That means there were 38 other ideas that did not make it, but A39 finally did. It will go to the full Ways and Means Committee on Friday morning. Conceivably, the full Ways and Means Committee could do something to it, so it's not a, it's not really a done deal yet, but significantly, once a bill has been assigned to Ways and Means from, for instance, a Senate committee, which is where it first went through Senate workforce and on to Ways and Means, it immediately goes to the Senate floor and then to the House floor, which skips the House committee process altogether. So the, the, the opportunities to amend the bill have gotten a lot smaller with the action this morning. The, the update that is in your packet under attachment B, I think, remains largely accurate. It's a fairly detailed bill, so there's, there's a lot more there, but it does apply to employers that have at least 10 employees with a carve-out for Portland, so they did. There is a preemption on local governments with the exception of Portland's ordinance, which is allowed to stand. The minimum rate of accrual is one hour of paid time off for every 30 hours week worked. Employees allowed to earn and use up to 40 hours of sick time per year. Like I said, it does preempt local ordinances. There's, there's a little nuance to the preemption that has an additional two-year preemption for local schedule-related ordinances. So there's been some local governments that have looked at trying to do flex time ordinances, and that would be off the table at least for the next two years. And then, as the last bullet indicates, it does apply to all employees irrespective of their status, whether full-time, part-time, or seasonal.
Thank you. Any questions for Alex on the sick leave? Is the A39 available on the website?
Yes.
Thank you. So if there are no further questions for Alex, we'll let him hustle back up to Salem.
Could I bring one more measure to your attention? It was brought up during the Board of Health meetings, or excuse me, not the Board of Health, but your semi-annual report this morning. There, I think, Commissioner Ligon, you ask some questions about farm-to-school, the farm-to-school program. So House Bill 2721 is that bill. They did a little bit of policy tweaking to it, so that it's, I think it's actually easier for farmers and schools to get together. It's not a, the grant program has been really streamlined, so it's a lot easier to get involved with this stream of money. And if it makes it through Ways and Means, which is where it's parked right now, it's going to get about a fourfold increase in funding. So from about a million bucks to just shy of five, 5 million. And since we adopted that as one of our pre-session priorities, Commissioner Bozovich, I took the liberty of developing a piece of testimony for you to submit to Ways and Means, and I'll make sure you see that, but I don't, it's not the kind of thing that we need to actually get in front of the full board, in that we've taken it up as a priority for pre-session.
Excellent. Thank you for the report.
Yep.
And drive safely. So that brings us to Item 7C, which is our third quarter financial report. And I see Ms. Moody.
Mr. Chair, as Ms. Moody is coming up here, you see Judy Williams was listed. We're really disappointed she isn't here today, because she was in labor this morning. Right now, I'm questioning her commitment to our organization. I don't know what makes her think she could miss a meeting for delivering her child. So we wish her all the best, and she, everything was going well. But we're going to pinch-hit for her today, so Ms. Moody will cover the third quarter financial report, and then I'll give you the update on the strategic plan.
So it wouldn't have mattered if we didn't have to interrupt our day for a court case. She would have missed it anyway. She was going to miss it anyways, yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chair Bozovich. So bringing to you the third quarter quarterly report here, financial report. And I'll just quickly go through it. We have added the fund for solid waste to it, so that's different than what you've seen, and I don't have a PowerPoint for you, so hopefully you have your hand out there. So quickly, the executive summary goes over a few things that have happened in the economy since the last time you've received a report. So the cost of living, and this report is ending as of March 31, 2015, just to be clear on the time period. So cost of living in the United States has increased just 0.2% looking at the last three months. Unemployment levels continue to go down, and in fact, you'll see that there's some indicators that show that Oregon's unemployment rate has fallen below the U.S. rate for the first time since 1996. The Lane County's is a little bit above the Oregon rate, but ours also continues to fall, as I'm sure you've seen in recent news. So that is good. Building permit activity in land management, the comparison we have here in the report is just comparing it to the last quarter, so not comparing it to a year ago. But it has gone down over this last quarter. Of course, that can be fairly cyclical, so we don't know yet if that's a long-term indicator or not, but we'll watch that. And the inflation, as I mentioned, 0.2. Over the last 12 months, it has actually declined by 0.1%. So that has been very flat inflation in the United States over this last 12 months. We do continue to see increases in health insurance, though that's mentioned for you on the bottom of Page 3, going up about 2%, 1.2% for the quarter of March, and the 2% is for the year. Page 4, we go over our real estate statistics. Over the past 12 months, the median housing price in Lane County has increased by 3.9% and the average by 4%. So that's a very good trend on the housing prices there. I already mentioned building activity. So beginning on Page 6, goes over the general fund, starting with resources. Comparing it to last year, 1314, we are, we've collected more of our revenue at this point in time compared to budget, but a big piece of that is based on when we received the Secure Rule Schools timber payment. So we received it in the timber payment in the third quarter in this year, whereas last year, there was such a delay, we didn't receive it until the fourth quarter. So that's the explanation for that on the revenue. Everything else is coming in as predicted, and we're within budget. On the expenditure side, there's just a slight increase in expenses, 1.53% over the same period of last year, most of that appearing in the personnel category. That's going to be a difference in vacancy rates year to year. You don't know which positions are vacant at which time, so predictably, we would likely have more of our positions filled than we did a year ago. But that's a very slight percentage difference. So again, positive and within budget on our expenses. Page 8, we go into the road fund. They're seeing the same thing with their revenue as the general fund, and again, it's related to the timber payments and the timing of the Secure Rule Schools in 1314 coming in, in the fourth quarter. So they're still positive and within budget. They also go into detail telling you what their revenue will increase to once we put the Secure Rule Schools payments into the budget, which will occur in supplemental 3 here in a couple weeks. So then that percentage of budget to actuals is going to shift just a little bit as we bring our budget up to date. On the expense side, they also are just barely above where they were the third quarter of last year, 0.21% over the same period. So that is just a consistent trend of how much they spend by this time of year based on their projects. And finally, the solid waste fund, which I mentioned has been added. So this will show a slight increase, just 0.15% when you're looking at the same time period from last year. Some of that is related to the fee increase that the Board recently adopted, and they changed just a designation of how revenue is categorized. It's that land management fee that comes out of the solid waste fund, we've changed that so that it appears as revenue over in land management fund and not as revenue in the solid waste fund. So that's a slight change there, but positive within budget. And then, again, on the expenses, also positive and within budget, there's an increase of 3.37% of their expenses to budget in the same period as last year. But some of that is due to the accounting methodology and that change with the land management fee. So with that, we're open for questions.
Any questions for staff? Very impressive step in.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no questions, I appreciate the work and the pinch-hitting. So that moves us to Item D, which is also a report from the, in labor, Ms. Williams. It's the quarterly update on our Lane County strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and I'll just provide you a quick overview. As you know, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new strategic plan in November 2014. We're about six months into the implementation of that strategic plan. We have three priorities: safe and healthy county, vibrant communities, and infrastructure. And within those three priorities, we have seven objectives, 14 strategies, and 43 action items. So 43 specific goals that have been identified that we're targeting. And then, of course, as you saw in the Budget Committee meetings and the presentations from departments, all of our departments have developed their own strategic plans. Some of them had had strategic plans, those have been updated. Others had not had, had never had a strategic plan, or theirs had been significantly outdated. And so we've gone through the process to make sure that we've integrated our strategic planning countywide, and that the strategic plans developed at the department level are feeding into the Boards' adopted countywide strategic plans, so that we have good integration and coordination between all of our planning and execution efforts. So of those 43 action items, we have 10 completed goals that, that have been completed in the past six months. We have 11 action items that we're monitoring, so that means that something has changed there for the positive or negative. There's something that has changed that we're monitoring on those 11 items, and 22 of the 43 are on-target and in process. And I'll just go through a couple of these for you to give you an update. You heard this morning from Healthy Human Services on an update of a number of items. You heard from Mr. Kyler on an update of some legislative items, so I'm not going to cover those, but I'll touch on some areas that have not already been referenced today. First, under a safe and healthy county and ensuring safety throughout our county, one of the action items identified is to identify options to stabilize or reduce expenses and enhance revenues in the general fund while maintaining a quality workforce. And of course, that was really geared at developing and seeking approval for a fiscal year 1516 budget that maintains critical public safety services. And we have been able to do that in the 1516 budget. Our planning now begins for the 1617 budget, both in the general fund and the road fund, as you know, face emphasis in the next two budget cycles. So we'll continue work there, but I think a success largely in getting a budget approved from the Budget Committee and now on to the Board that is balanced in the general fund without reductions in public safety services. Of course, we have significant reductions of around 20 FTE in the road fund as a result of loss of revenue there. The other one I want to touch on is evaluating feasibility of a special public safety district. This is something that in the, with the transition of sheriffs and our efforts now to focus on where do we go from here with the future of public safety funding. We have been in some conversations with the Chinook Institute and Portland State University on doing an evaluation of a public safety district, and I've met with the sheriff. And that, that item is on hold for the time being, and we're going to look at doing some additional survey research within our community that identify the critical areas that our residents are willing to, to fund for public safety. And so we will, we will look at, we'll continue to plan for that feasibility to get for a public safety district. I wanted to let you know that for the time being, that particular effort is, is on hold. Got a couple others here. Third one I want to update on is under vibrant communities and supporting and protecting a vibrant natural environment. Commissioner Farr mentioned a meeting that we're having this, later this week to identify a location for and support a year-round farmers market, public market food hub. And we brought together a group of stakeholders on a task force from Lane County, City of Eugene, the farmers market, the University of Oregon, Whole Foods, University College, and others. I recognize this isn't just about the city and county governments coming together, this is about us creating a vibrant partnership between a number of agencies. And it's not just about identifying the location, it's about really building a business plan for how public market, farmers market can and should function in the downtown area. So that task force will kick off this week, and we'll provide updates to you in the future on that. Also, a similar item to continue to partner with Traveling County and local businesses to promote Lane County as a tourist destination. We have received a request, and Commissioner Farr, who represents Lane County on the Traveling County Board, and I attended the board meeting last week, and Traveling County has made a request of Lane County that we consider a new way to contract with them through a longer-term type of rolling contract that will allow for greater certainty for Traveling County. And we think that that has some potential benefit, both for Traveling County and for Lane County as an organization, if done in the right way, that maintains the appropriate accountability for our organization and for taxpayers. So we're going to explore that further, and we'll be talking with the agenda team first about the process for doing that. We think certainly with the Track and Field, the World event that's coming in 2021, which is, happens to be five years from now, as opposed to doing shorter-term contracts that create a lot of uncertainty, actually exploring a longer-term arrangement, again, that has the appropriate accountability. the appropriate accountability built in, has some merit. So we're going to bring that up again with the agenda team and evaluate it further at the staff level, along with legal counsel, and if we have some solutions that we can propose to the board, then we'll bring that forward to you. And finally, under vibrant communities and ensuring equity and access, an item that the board has asked about, and that I wanted to assure you we are continuing to work on, is creating a formal structure that engages community organizations and Lane County leaders in positive opportunities to promote equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I mentioned to the board that we met at the end of April with a group of community stakeholders and county leaders, and we have another meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks to further those conversations. So we continue to work on that topic, and we believe we're making progress in identifying some opportunities that we can further partner with folks in our community around those issues. So I'll leave it there. A lot of other, I'm not going to go through all 43, but I wanted to just touch on a few of those, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I think overall, we've made a fair amount of progress. We have, of the 43 action items, we've identified 10 of those have been completed, and you know, two, about half of them are on target. Half of the 43 are on target, which represents about two-thirds of the remaining action items. We'll continue to come back to the board. We're going to do annual, annual updates to the plan, so we can add goals, take goals off, and make adjustments as needed. So with that, I'll happy to answer any questions or suggestions you may have for additional action items.
Any questions for Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Steve, I noticed on, right back to health, safety, or safe, healthy county, item number one, this is completed SRS payments. I might just suggest that we're in the process of, the BLM is trying to adopt a resource management plan. That plan can provide resources to the county. So I think even though we have a payment for 2015, there probably should be some additional action items to ensure that we make comments on these items as they move forward. I'm sure there's going to be additional work for potential future Secure Rule School payments or for Forest Service, Forest Management Policy too. So just wanted to highlight, yeah, we hit a milestone, we got a payment, but I don't think that we should knock that item off the, the work as a task or an action item.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so Steve, if, this is a little delicate, but yesterday, we were meeting from the Executive Committee side of the new South Lamont Economic EDC. And so far, the dollars received have been from Lane County and Springfield, but the dollars from the last fiscal budget from Eugene have not been received. Is there, at the next cell meeting, is that something you'd be comfortable bringing up to Mr. Reese? Maybe just because I'm guessing, they've also allocated the same amount of money in this new budget they just adopted that will begin fiscal, their fiscal year is the same as ours, I'm assuming, July. So that would be another same amount. So they have not been received, so if that could be something you could bring up, I think that would be important as we move forward on having to kind of reestablish in this new economic development nonprofit corporation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner would be happy to bring up that conversation, and also on the items suggested by Commissioner Stewart. I think that's a, it's a good idea also for us to, again, we're going to have items here that are going to be completed, and then we'll remove them, we'll put them on a completed list, but it doesn't mean we're done with it. We need to add, what, you know, what is the next step? So again, we, on the 1516 budget, we've largely completed that task, but we've got to now start focusing on the 1617 budget on the SRS payments. We got payments for 14 and 15, now we need to look at a longer-term strategy. So we will, as we move towards planning for that annual update session, work on proposing, based on board feedback, additional goals to add to replace the ones that have been taken off.
Any further questions or comments? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Just to touch bases again on, on the farmers market, that meeting is scheduled for 11 o'clock, I believe, on, on Thursday of this week, the discussion regarding farmers market. And we talked a little bit in, in the Health Board meeting, Board of Health meeting this morning, about, about the, the five pillars of the chip, or the five key areas, it's called, of the chip, and one of them being addressing obesity. And we talked ever so briefly about the importance of locally-produced fruits and vegetables in, in providing nutritious food, not only to schools, but making it more readily available to the people who live in Lane County. And I think it's really important that we push forward with that. It is a part of the chip. And Mr. Mokraski, you and I have talked, and we've all talked a lot about how the chip is integral to the Lane County strategic plan. And so I'm pleased to see that we're moving forward with the discussion, understanding there are conditions that need to be addressed regarding the placement of the farmers market and the timing of the farmers market. But I'm, I rest assured that we are moving forward along those lines, and that at some point in the not-too-distant future, it'll provide farmers, who are businesses in Lane County, a further outlet for their, for selling their products, and potentially a greater incentive for them to grow more products locally. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you for the report. So moving on, we'll get to item eight, Commissioner's Business, and the first item is announcements. Any announcements from the board? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of announcements. One, I'll talk about the, Mr. Mokraski alluded to the, it's called a special session that was held yesterday regarding Operation 365 and veterans homelessness. We have a, we have a goal of, by October 31st of this year, eliminating, functionally eliminating veterans homelessness in Lane County. Now, functionally, briefly explanation of that is, understanding that some people choose a particular lifestyle and don't want to change their lifestyle, and that may include living someplace other than in a, what we would, what we would call it, an established home. So yesterday, we had a strategic session that about 70 people were involved in it, and I was really very, very pleased to see how many people came from across the state to attend the meeting yesterday, including, including Andy Smith from Association of Oregon County was there, who worked on Veterans Affairs for the AOC, and also including Margaret Salazar, who is the regional field director for HUD. So it attracted a lot of people. And what we found out yesterday was that since we launched Operation 365, we've housed about 170 or so of the 350 to 400 homeless veterans in Lane County. So we're about halfway there. Between now and October 31st, our goal is to make certain that homeless, there are no homeless veterans in Lane County. So we talked about the discussion of what does, what entails homelessness, what is the description of a home, and it really is varied. You know, we have a, a housing ladder that we've always talked about in certain circles regarding emergency housing, transitional housing, and moving into more fixed and more permanent-looking housing. So we're looking at housing veterans in something other than emergency or transitional housing before October 31st. So the strategies that we came up with yesterday, that we began to coalesce on yesterday, involve housing the remaining, maybe as many as 200 homeless veterans in Lane County. We're optimistic that we're going to move forward in that direction, and the strategies will, will emerge, including cooperation and partnership with landlords and renters, renters, and, and also codes, code enforcement, and, and actual design of microhousing and miniature housing. So I'm really optimistic. Mr. Mokraski was there, other folks from Lane County were there, Steve Manella was there pretty much for the entire day, Alicia Hayes was there for the entire day, as was Larry Abel, Abel, Abel was there. I always get Bruce and Larry's names mixed up, spelled the same, pronounced differently. And, and so we, we had a great, a great breakout session, and once again, a great deal was, was addressed. And I'm confident that by October 31st of this year, functionally homelessness for veterans in Lane County will be eliminated. And I'm excited that HUD is a part of the process. HUD is helping us with some interpreting and using some of their rules regarding what is, what is allowed for HUD funding for housing. For instance, HUD can be fairly tight on what is allowed in a house. You know, it doesn't allow loft, loft bedrooms for one, for instance. Requires certain plumbing, for instance, that can be, that can be, that potentially can be adjusted to make a single room dwelling more appropriate for HUD funding. So we're moving forward. It's, it's, it's pretty, exciting is not the right word. It's invigorating, and it's, it's also satisfying to see that we are making strides in making certain that veterans are housed. A number of us were at the, the opening of the seventh Veterans House from the Veterans Housing Project, Vincent DePaul's Veterans Housing Project. It was a Seneca House funded predominantly by the Seneca Group of Companies, and it was a brand-new ground-up house, and really is an absolutely marvelous facility for the family that moved into there. A family that otherwise would have had difficulty locating a house. So we're moving forward. It's important that we house veterans. It also casts a light on the fact that we do have people who are not veterans, who are homeless, people who are having difficulty finding housing in our community, whether it even be transitional and emergency housing in the, in the community. We're moving forward on those fronts also. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mokraski, for making it a priority of yours and, and helping me to focus on it as a priority of mine. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to share with the board that I will not be able to be in attendance on, at the June 16th meeting. I will be attending a National Forest Counties and Schools Coalition Board meeting in regards to help, help with the planning process of, you know, how that organization should move forward with assisting in Secure Rule Schools and Forest Management work. So sorry about that. I just wanted to alert everybody that I wouldn't be in attendance. Thank you.
Further announcements? Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quickly, so last week, I was in Portland, attended the World Indoor Games Advisory Committee. And so, believe it or not, so the World Indoor Championships are coming to Oregon as well, and it's actually being managed and ran by Tracktown, it'll be actually held in Portland. So it'll be held at the Oregon Convention Center, as well as the Moda Center will also be participating as well. Somewhere around 200 countries will be coming in, and I do believe Kerry Westland will be playing a significant role in that as well, because while the indoor games are located in Portland, again, the whole idea is to, this is an opportunity really to put, again, Oregon as a whole on the map and showcase the state as a whole. So very excited. So World Indoors here in '16, then we have the trials coming back up in '16 and later that summer, and of course, the World Games coming here in 2021, here in Eugene, as a matter of fact. So a lot of track and field opportunities happening, along with the NCAA's, the U.S. Track and Fields, and so on and so forth. So Tracktown is clearly living up to its name. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for being there. Any other announcements? I've got a couple announcements, and I'm also going to kind of bend my announcements a little bit into remonstrance, but seeing we had to kind of gloss over that this morning. And the first thing I want to do is apologize to some of the public for our schedule today. Apparently, one of our commissioners reads minds and understood the intent of the board when we took an action that was publicly deliberated and discussed two years ago, and three of us had to provide testimony as to our intent at the time that we publicly discussed why we were passing that ordinance order at that time. Because due to some of the suppositions about our mental intent, the judge allowed that to be brought into the trial last minute, and that's why we had to excuse ourselves today, delay actions. We had a significant number of people that were waiting to hear the board discussion on an upcoming agenda item. But, you know, it's interesting that somebody can divine the minds of his fellow board members that also reads his email at the same time he was in board meetings. So I apologize to the public for that interruption. The other thing I wanted to kind of, is a sort of announcement, is we had our final Budget Committee meeting about a week or so ago, and there was not a single member of the press or a single member of the public present for the adoption of our FY 1516 budget, which included the cuts we had to make to our Public Works Department due to the failure of the vehicle registration fee. And I just find that absolutely flabbergasting. You know, one of the things I fought constantly as I was out talking about the vehicle registration fee was complete misinformation that was out there in the public about our budget. Yet here we were, having a public hearing, which no one signed up for, and deliberating. And some of the deliberations that night were, should we add back money to make up for the cuts? You know, and should we take money from parks to fund our DA's office and stuff? No one was here to hear any of that. The press wasn't here to report it. That is just amazing to me, that there was not a single public member or a single member of the press here for when our county budget committee passed our annual budget that had significant cuts in it. So I'm, I'm just a little disappointed, and hopefully, we can do something in the interim to get people interested enough to pay attention to the details of our budget all the time, not just when we have a money measure on the ballot, so they have a better understanding of why we even had to put a money measure on the ballot. Finally, I'd just like to make sure people are aware, we have a large events task force that's having an open house tomorrow from four to seven, and this is pretty critical. They're looking at 13 parks across the county, and, and this is not just Mount Piscata and Emerald Meadows. This goes from Ada Park on the coast all the way out to Blue, Blue Mountain Park, you know, way out on the, on the east end of the county. About what events are the correct events to have in these parks, large events-wise? And most people think, oh, it's, you know, we want to open all these parks up for concerts. No, it includes things like triathlons at Richardson Park that draw more than 1,000 people, or includes the camping at Somerville Park every year that the City of Anita leases from us for the country fair, that's more than 1,000 people. So if folks are looking to have input on how their local parks are used and utilized and available for these large events, they need to get involved. And tomorrow afternoon, four o'clock, out at our Public Works on Delta Highway in the Goodson Room, please come by at any time between four and seven. It's not a set schedule. You can drop in any time during that time period and provide input. And there's also the ability to give that input electronically or even by hard copy, if you wish. But I would encourage people to get involved with that, so they can get their input accounted for as we make, as our citizen group makes a recommendation to the board, setting policy around large events in, in our parks. So just want to make sure everybody was aware of that. Any further announcements? With that, we'll move on to item 8B, which is Resolution Order 15060205, in the matter of a resolution supporting Second Amendment rights. And it has Mr. Dingell down here as presenting, but I think I will, I will take a moment to, to bring folks up to speed as to why this is coming before the board today and what's before the board today. Back, I think, in February, I asked the board for three head nods to put a Second Amendment Support Resolution on a future board agenda, and we got more than three head nods, I believe, at that time, to put the, put it on the future agenda items list. It was scheduled to come up at fair, you know, at some time during that period, and we actually delayed action on that at that time, at the recommendation of our intergovernmental relations manager, Alex Kyler, that we could do a better job lobbying personally, not having passed a strong resolution in advance of doing some of that lobbying in Salem, that, that might actually hurt our ability to influence bills relating to the Second Amendment. So we delayed that, pushed it off for a while, and now it's kind of, that lobbying effort's finished with, the bills come out that are going to come out on Second Amendment issues in Salem. So it's come back up on the schedule again. You know, it was pushed off and delayed to give us an opportunity to do that lobbying, much of which was extremely unsuccessful. And there are two versions of the resolution before the board today. The one that was originally- The one that was originally written by Mr. Dingell way back when we first requested it, which is fairly generic, just supporting the Second Amendment and Article One, Section 27 of the Oregon Constitution, which is an even stronger statement of the right to bear arms than the US constitutions. And then a second one that includes the prohibition on use of county funds for the implementation enforcement of Senate Bill 941, which I asked to have a second version drafted, which is in concurrence with the county's prior legislative priorities that were adopted by the board to oppose unfunded mandates, which is basically what Senate Bill 941 represents. It's an unfunded mandate. It specifically changed the requirement of who investigates background checks that come back as not clean from OSP delegating it down to the local law enforcement authorities. And I'm sure after our, if folks have been present at our budget committee meeting, we had a long discussion about our inability to prosecute crimes and how that's hurt our Community Corrections Act funding because we don't have the folks under supervision and parole. And this just adds to that, that population and number of crimes they're expecting us to deal with without proper state funding. So we have kind of a choice as to which resolution we wish to adopt. That's how it got to the board and why it's on our schedule now. It was basically at an agenda team request at the end of a board meeting. We had more, we had the three head nods plus to have it on the agenda. So I think the paper said I drafted the resolution and I don't think that's exactly accurate and, but it was my original request to have it put on the agenda, but it was the board, no one board member puts anything on the agenda. It has to be three board members giving consent. So I just want to clarify that. So with that, is there anything you'd like to add?
Chair Bozovich, I think you've hit the, or you've done a good job describing it. The first one is just a general, whichever version you're referring to is the first one is just a general generic statement of existing law regarding the Second Amendment. And then the difference is the one that you mentioned, which is a resolution indicating that, that no county funds will be spent or implementing, I think I actually used the bill number, Senate Bill 941.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or comments? Commissioner Farr, then Commissioner Sorensen.
I'll, I'm going to get back in the queue after a couple of questions. On the third whereas, Mr. Dingell, "The Board of Commissioners of Lane County feel that public recognition of the Constitution of, of the United States of America and Oregon as the documents that protect and preserve our democracy and liberty." That's not a complete sentence. It doesn't say what we feel. It says, it says that we feel something, but it doesn't say what we feel.
It is intended, and I guess it just depends on how you read it, that it's intended to say that you feel that those, that those documents protect and preserve democracy and liberty. That's what it's intended to do, or intended to convey.
I suspected that to be the case. "The Board of Commissioners of Lane County feel that public recognition of the Constitution, et cetera, et cetera, that protect and preserve our democracy and liberty." And it doesn't say that, though. I mean, it's an incomplete sentence that makes this resolution seem a little bit almost farcical. I mean, if, if I were to read that, I mean, it, it just, that's a sentence that doesn't make any sense. Now, I'd love to be corrected on that, to remove that, just a really little.
I suppose it probably would be clearer if it, if it said "are" the documents as opposed as the documents. I think it just depends on how you use that word.
Public recognition of the documents.
If it said "are" the documents as opposed as.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, they're, they are sort of, they are synonyms of sort of, just it probably reads more, more, less, I guess, less confusing.
That, once again, that's just technical. If I'm going to vote yes on something, I'd like it to be something that Postarity is going to not look at it and say, geez, this guy did not go through grammar. Even though I am.
Sorry, I have a punctuation correction too, so.
And, and I think punctuation corrections can be handled by a scrivener. Is that the correct term? I do have other questions, but that's, that's the technical question regarding that one, which can be cleared up pretty quickly.
As versus are. Was that all? Commissioner Farr?
For this, yeah, just for that.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much. Did you have any help in drafting this from our public health people?
From our public health people?
Yeah, my understanding is they've identified gun violence as a public health issue. No? Okay. In the resolution, there's a reference to, to, that the significant majority of all lawfully owned firearms in the United States will not be used in a crime in a given year. What information do you rely upon to say that? And if, do you have any data on the number of firearms that are used in crime in Lane County?
Not specifically that are used in Lane County. That was taken from, I believe, that was an F, it was either a BA, Bureau of Alcohol and Tobacco, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms Report or an, and/or an FBI report in terms of the number of gun crimes reported versus the number of firearms in the United States.
Okay. My understanding is that the US has about half of all of the firearms in the world, but only 5% of the population. Is that, is that accurate?
I have no idea.
This is from Wikipedia, but it says 67% of all homicides in the United States were conducted, were used, were conducted using a firearm. Is that a fair statement?
If it's Wikipedia, it must be. I have no idea.
Yeah, I have no idea. It says, "According to the United Nations Office on Drugs and Crimes, 67% of all homicides in the US were conducted using a firearm." And 61% of all gun-related deaths in the US are suicides. Do you think those are valid things to include in the resolution if we're talking about how most firearms aren't used in a crime? But on the other hand, maybe it's fair to say there were 18,000 firearm-related suicides in 2010.
Because I wasn't getting, I didn't understand the direction to be talking about. The first, the very first one of these just simply is a generic recitation of the, of the facts. I didn't see that there are all the things that you don't do with them or do do with them.
In the next paragraph, you wrote, "State and federal lawmakers continue to propose measures aimed at restricting all firearms." Are you aware of any current state legislation that would restrict all firearms? And what is that?
What are you looking at? Let's see if we can do the proper measures aimed at restricting all firearms, including bans, taxation, the, the perception that bans, taxation, extensive waiting periods and, and those other things amount to that.
So your view is that if there's a waiting period proposal or a licensing proposal, that would be an example of, of legislators continuing to propose measures aimed at restricting all firearms?
And again, you keep saying me. It's, I'm, I'm expressing or attempting to express the, what I understood to be the direction from the board. I don't have, I don't have a dog in this side. This is a policy call for the board. So these are, there were a variety of, of these choices that were out there. There, literally, this could have been, there could have been 100 wherethes on this. So I was trying to select the ones that I thought reflected what I understood to be from the discussion that, when, when the board gave direction to draft it. You're obviously free to change and adopt.
What is meant by the phrase "even confiscation"? Is that when a criminal is convicted of a crime and their right to possess a firearm on probation is taken from them? Is that, is that an example of confiscation?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider that an example of confiscation.
What's an example of a present federal lawmaker that's got a bill that confiscates firearms?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Would it be fair to say it's not accurate? That we don't know of any state or federal lawmakers that are seeking to confiscate firearms?
I've seen state measures that have that in it.
I think there have been measures that have been proposed that have not been adopted.
Okay. Now, is the only difference between the two resolutions that one has the legislature pass Senate Bill 941 requiring background checks on firearms transactions?
I believe, I believe that the only difference between the two is the addition of those paragraph, the last two paragraphs that specifically reference Senate Bill 941 and then the, the portion of the resolution that would deal with the, with specifically with 941 and spending of money.
Now, my understanding, the governor has signed Senate Bill 941 into law. So wouldn't we want to include the ORS provisions in the resolution? Because since the time this was drafted and the time the governor signed it, now we have an ORS provision that says this is a law, not a Senate bill.
You could do, you could certainly do that if you chose, if the board chose.
Okay. I guess it'd be more accurate to say, if we didn't have an ORS, that we say, well, the Oregon Legislature has passed and the governor has signed Senate Bill 941, if we were going to include the.
You could, you could put, name the committee, you could name the individual members who voted for it. You could, you could add anything that you wanted to.
I'll pass for a second round.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as far as the first resolution, you know, frankly, I joined a rod and gun club when I was 12 years old in 1974. I've had firearms ever since. And so, I mean, if the board is wanting to move forward on this resolution, for me personally, I'm comfortable with it. What I'd like to do is maybe get more into the second resolution and concerning SB 941. And so I asked Sheriff Trapp and Mr. Kyler also to be here this, this, well, I guess it is afternoon now. And by the way, Sheriff Trapp, that really rolls off the tongue pretty well now, I must say. So, so Sheriff Trapp, if you could come forward, I would appreciate it. And the reason why I'm asking this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Kyler to be prepared as well for a couple of questions here. Sheriff, wherever you feel comfortable. Yeah. So the question, and this really regards around Senate Bill 941, in which we heard from different sheriffs around the state talking about the issue of resources. I think that you have maybe mentioned your concern about resources as well. The question I'd like to ask you is, it was my understanding that there are already laws in place regarding background checks? Is that correct?
There are, yes.
And as far as the way this law, and I don't know if you had a real chance to really study it that closely, but the way this law is written, from your perspective and given the nature of the resources that you have at your disposal, which seem to be declining annually, will this be challenging for you to enforce this?
I think the simple answer, this is challenging legislation to be enforced by any law enforcement with any amount of resources. The, the enforceability of it really depends on the answers given by the person who's possessing the gun at the time and the circumstances that are present. A lot of the factors associated with the legislation are not provable absent a confession. And so if the person in possession of a firearm that's being contacted by law enforcement gives a certain answer, then it's an unenforceable legislation. Beyond that, with our resources, this is the type of enforcement that won't rise to a very high priority for us, let alone even be looked at as far as a response. Mostly, I think what this law does is, is affects law-abiding, legal gun owners who want to follow the law. And it adds one more level of process in place for them to transfer firearms legally between people that can lawfully possess firearms and have for years and will do everything they can do to, to follow the law. My experience, and I think if you talk to any law enforcement professional that's been in the job very long, is a lot of the firearms that we deal with in the criminal world are not obtained lawfully. Or if they were, it wasn't intentionally obtained lawfully. It was, just happened to be that they came across lawfully. Whether we put in this law or a bunch of other gun control laws, the reality is, if somebody wants to possess a firearm for criminal purposes, there are a lot of ways to get them and usually it's breaking into your house and taking yours until the law enforcement recovers that firearm. So, you know, it's, it is one more level that, that can make it more difficult for some circumstances. As I understand it, if this law was in place and enforced to its full extent, it would not have changed the possession of the firearm at Clackamas Town Center, Sandy Hook, and you name it, all the other big headline mass shootings around the country. This type of legislation doesn't have an impact on that. And if it was in place and the person wanted to follow it, they would find a different way of, of obtaining a firearm. So I don't think we have the resources to pursue it. And, and in the reality, I don't think it's very enforceable just because of the way it, the elements have to be put together.
And again, you've been a law enforcement professional for how, since when again?
Since 1988, 27 years.
So 27 years. So based, this is based on your, your 27-year career and now as a sheriff of our county that you're basing, you're, you're, in a sense, your opinion on, is that correct?
Yes. And I can give you a number of examples of cases where we've dealt with, the comment was made earlier about the number of homicides. And we certainly have homicides in this county and we have a lot of them are firearm homicides. A lot of them, if it was a person that was not legally allowed to possess a firearm, the firearms that we come across with, with that population are, are not obtained in any manner that would have been legal to begin with, private person sale or otherwise. And it's usually a transfer of sales of a stolen gun from one person to another that neither of them were lawfully able to possess a firearm. So I don't know, I just don't see it changing a lot in today's environment.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chair, may I ask Mr. Kyler to come forward? Is that?
Yes.
Mr. Kyler, if you could, real, real quickly, and I think based on the, the information that Sheriff Trapp provided, because one, one of the sentences, and this would have to be a scrivener's error correction because I think Lane is a count, I think it is a county. But anyway, says, "Whereas Senate Bill 941 contains an unfunded mandate for Lane County government in the form of investigations, enforcement prosecution and incarceration." So based on the information that's provided by Sheriff Trapp and your experience as our government affairs, Director, would you, would you agree with that sentence that in a sense what has been set up here is an unfunded mandate?
Chairman Bozovich, Commissioner Lichen, so the Oregon Constitution does define what an unfunded mandate is and local governments do provide that information to legislative fiscal office. So I've got the, the fiscal statement here on 941. Legislative Fiscal Office found that the bill does not affect local government service levels or shared revenues sufficient to trigger Section 15, Article 11 of the Oregon Constitution. That's where the unfunded mandate is. It's defined as essentially 1/100 of 1% of the annual budget of the county or this local government. In our case, I think that amounts to, in the neighborhood of $60,000 with an annual budget, depending on how you define our annual budget.
Given we do transfer road funds just to fund patrol, could that qualify?
Well, no, I think they're looking at the annual budget. But at any rate, I mean, I think it's, it's probably very close depending on what sort of resources the sheriff would deem necessary to actually fully staff up to do the work required under Senate Bill 941. There's a couple of other areas within 941 that are also involved, the sheriff's office related to concealed weapons licensing and court orders regarding mental fitness. So. So there are a couple arenas there where you could see a very, I mean, I think it's a borderline call, and unfortunately Legislative Fiscal Office is sometimes, I don't know how to say this, either less inaccurate or inaccurate or whatever on these local government impacts. They do quite a nice job on how much it's going to cost state agencies, but less on local government impact.
And given Senator Courtney made mental health one of his top priorities, how much mental health dollars was allocated in SB 941?
There's no appropriation in 941.
There isn't? Oh, all right. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Forrest.
Thank you. You know, I have a number of things to say about this. You know, this is the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. And by passing this, we're affirming that we are in support of the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. It doesn't say anything about the other 26, right? It's just the one, you know, I got to say, I have a list here of all of the oaths that I've sworn, and this list goes on and on. And I've sworn oaths that I would guarantee nobody else in this room has sworn. This one, "I hereby declare an oath that I absolutely and entirely renounce and abjure all allegiance and fidelity to any foreign prince, potent state, or sovereignty of whom I have which heretofore been a subject or citizen; that I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic; that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same." This is where my oath starts a very little bit. "That I will bear arms on behalf of the United States when required by the law; that I will perform noncombatant services in the Armed Forces of the United States when required by law; that I will perform work of national importance under civilian direction when required by the law; and I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion," which I did. Now, not many people swear an oath to serve in the Army when required by law. Not many people swear an oath to perform noncombatant services in the Armed Forces when required by law. I have made that oath, and I take it very, very, very seriously. It's the greatest oath I've ever taken in my life, other than allegiance to my wife. I've also been, having been appointed an officer in the Army of the United States, as indicated above, in the grade of Second Lieutenant, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies foreign and domestic; that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same; that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations. Now, most oaths that have been sworn, including those taking office, whether it be state representative, whether it be city councilor, whether it be school board, whether it be Lane County Commissioner, don't talk about mental reservations or purpose of evasion. I've sworn oaths that talk about mental evasions, purpose of evasion, that says I will serve in the Army when required by law, that says I will serve in noncombatant services, and I take these seriously, and I will. I take the oaths that I have sworn very, very seriously, supporting the Constitution of the United States, the original Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments, the subsequent 17 amendments, one of which we all know was repealed, the 18th Amendment was repealed by the, what was it, the 21st Amendment, I think, prohibition. So, you know, amendments can be kicked away, kicked aside. But that being said, there are other amendments that I take very seriously, and I'd like to point to something in here that I've got a question about. It's under the "therefore's," Lane County strongly affirms our commitment to the rights and liberties enshrined within the constitutions of the United States of America and Oregon. Absolutely. Especially the right to keep and bear arms. Now, I've got an exception with that, especially the right to keep and bear arms. That means that it supersedes voting based on race, which is the 15th Amendment. It supersedes, let's see, term limits for presidents. It supersedes the 19th Amendment, which is women's right to vote. So by saying especially the right to keep and bear arms, that tends to, I'd like to comment on that, doesn't that mean that it's especially that over the others? I don't read it that way. And I'm not asking you that because I know you didn't write this, Mr. Dingle. But to me, the word especially means above all others. You take all the others aside, especially this one, you know? I, you know, I love candy, especially Kit Kat, you know? I mean, it's like, you know, it's, to me, the word especially makes the Second Amendment something special beyond the First Amendment. We all know the First Amendment, that's held pretty securely. The 26th Amendment, the 18-year-old right to vote. Now, how about the 15th Amendment? Do we take that one pretty seriously? That's the right to vote based on race. Do we take that seriously? Is this especially over the right to vote based on race? So I have an issue with especially, you know? Based on these oaths that I have sworn, that I take very, very seriously, very seriously indeed, including my oath of citizenship, including my oath to join the Army and to become an officer in the Army, I take them very seriously. So, but to say especially, I support the right to keep and bear arms especially over the right for women to vote, you know? Especially over, here's one that people, not everybody likes, what is it, the 16th Amendment, we all know what that is, the income tax. You know, we don't all like that, but we couldn't live without it too easily as far as running a government is concerned. So especially, you know, I've got an issue with that. Based on that, it's really difficult for me to support this resolution unless somebody can explain what especially means and explain that it doesn't mean especially over the women's right to vote, especially over right to vote based on race, especially over the 14th Amendment, which describes citizenship of the United States. So I'm really needing answers here before I can say yes on this one.
Anybody else?
Unless somebody wants to throw out an answer to that, I don't know.
Well, let me give a try. The reason that wording is in there is the resolution's relative to this particular issue in the state and the legislation that's been proposed by the state, and the resolution is about our Second Amendment rights. So using the term especially, our Second Amendment is just pointing out that we're in support of that particular amendment for this resolution. If we were passing a resolution like we did on the NDAA, we might say especially your Fourth, Fifth, and Tenth Amendment rights, you know, that we're reaffirming in being against the National Defense Authorization Act, Section 1021 and 1022, that allowed for indefinite detention without charges and no due process. You know, so there's, you know, that's the reason it states especially that amendment, because the resolution's pertaining to people's rights to bear arms, and it also refers to Article 1, Section 27 of the Oregon Constitution, not all the other portions of the Oregon Constitution's Bill of Rights also, in the whereas section. So, you know, but, so, yes, I agree, the entire Constitution is important. You know, one of the things, though, is the Constitution doesn't grant us those rights in the first place. We had those rights, it just reaffirms and protects them. One of the arguments against the Bill of Rights when it was written was the fact that it did list specific rights that the founder, that several of the founders thought was, by listing, would downgrade all the rest of the rights that humans held, you know, from birth, basically. You know, that's, so if we call out especially one right, there's thousands of rights we hold as individuals that aren't enumerated in the Bill of Rights, that aren't enumerated in any of the 27 or 26 amendments as one was repealed, or the rest of the U.S. Constitution. I mean, we have rights as long as they don't infringe on other folks' rights, and they're not all described specifically in the Constitution.
Okay. I'm still wrestling with this, that doesn't appease me a bit. The, so what you're suggesting is that no one sentence or no one section of this resolution can be taken out of context with the rest of the resolution. So if somebody, if a newspaper or a, some media picked up this resolution, therefore, in the resolution number one, and just printed that, well, it's invalid because it only can be spoken when the rest of the resolution is spoken, but people are going to speak it without the rest of the resolution being spoken. And to me, you've not really gotten around the fact that this says that it lists the right to bear arms above the right to vote, the right to citizenship, the right to not having government troops quartered in your house. So I, it's, I still have trouble with the word especially. Maybe, is there a legal definition of that? Is, I mean, and I've looked up Webster's, you know, we kind of go by the dictionary definition, especially set something aside as being special, as being different to other things.
There's no legal, I mean, it could be in particular, or, I understood the context as Chair Bozovich mentioned, that this is about or related to the Second Amendment, so that's why it's said that.
I've also got my National Guard, our militia, I've got the oath that I swore to be in the Oregon Army National Guard as well, and it goes a little bit beyond. It talks about not just the Constitution of the United States, the Army National Guard, the Oregon Army National Guard says the Constitution of the State of Oregon, and it talks about the laws of the State of Oregon. So I, you know, I feel that by taking these oaths, I've already sworn my allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon, and also to the laws of the United States and the laws of the State of Oregon. And I think when it comes to law, sentencing definitely places one crime, breaking one law higher than breaking another, but as far as the Constitution itself is concerned, as far as the amendments of the Constitution, is one greater than any one of the others? Is one a special? Do we have to especially adhere to one over the other 26 or 25 if you count, if you drop off the 18th? So I'm, and remember, I've got this ream of oaths that I have sworn and continue to uphold.
So the NDAA ordinance resolution that we all voted, I believe it was a unanimous vote at the time, states in the first, therefore, Lane County strongly affirms our commitment to the rights and liberties enshrined within the Constitution of the United States, including the Fifth Amendment, right to due process, Sixth Amendment, right to trial, Eighth Amendment, prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment, and the Oregon Bill of Rights found at Article 1. And we listed specific sections.
Including and especially aren't the same.
Yeah, yeah. So if it's just over that single word, we can change that word to including, if that's your only objection. But we have made, we have made reference to specific articles of the Bill of Rights in past resolutions.
Well, let it be known that if I do vote yes on this, and I've not been convinced I am going to at this point, if I do vote yes, it's not placing the Second Amendment above the First, the 16th, or the, I mean, but the 18th. That if I do vote yes on this, I'm voting yes on, I'm essentially saying, well, let me restate my oath. Let me restate my oath of citizenship, let me restate my oath of U.S. Army officer. By the way, order the President of the United States, here's my commission right here, and it reaffirms the oath that I stated. And here's my oath of office for the Oregon State Representative, reaffirms what I've said. My oaths are very serious. My oaths all say that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States. None of my oaths say that I will question courts authority or question courts decisions. I may do that on my own, but, you know, my oaths are very, very serious, and I do, will, and shall, and always am going to, support and uphold the Constitution of the United States and that of Oregon.
That I do not doubt, and I appreciate your service. I just, the same issue did not come up when we were supporting the NDAA ordinance, that it was a restatement of your prior oaths, and we shouldn't be taking it up, so.
I did talk about my prior oath.
I know you talked about your prior oath, but you didn't object to the ordinance and you voted in favor of it.
Because we're including, we weren't especially.
Okay, then that may be the issue, is amending the resolution to change that one word.
And this is not a debate session right now, but once again, I do uphold the Constitution, the First through 27th amendments minus the 18th, which was repealed.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Sheriff, could you come up and answer some more questions about what the impact of this resolution might be? As you know, there are two resolutions, and one contains a reference to Senate Bill 941 that was passed by the Oregon House Representatives and passed by the State Senate and signed into law. And you probably heard my questions about whether we might want to be more precise about saying it was, it's a new state law. But one of my questions had to do with the comment or the whereas in there about, whereas state and federal lawmakers continue to propose measures aimed at restricting all firearms and ammunition. Are there, is there legislation that would do that?
Well, I think to a certain degree, this one does.
Okay.
This specific measure, 941, does, because this addresses the transfer of used firearms between private parties.
As opposed to a sale at a gun store?
By a licensed gun dealer.
Or even a, how about at a county fair or a gun show?
Well, those are already covered, but, so to answer your question, as I see it, this measure, 941, adds a layer of restriction and control that doesn't exist before the measure was passed.
Okay.
On all firearms, and I say that because all guns are only new once, and as soon as they're sold, they become used, and so essentially every firearm sold in America or sold in Oregon falls under this legislation after it's initially sold new from the gun dealer. Once I buy it from the gun dealer, this law then applies to any further transactions of that firearm between you and I or anybody else.
Okay.
So I think this specific legislation does apply to all firearms in Oregon. I'm not familiar with historical legislation, federal, state, and local around the country to answer more specifically to that with a specific example.
No, I see, I was just having a nice meeting with you the other day, and I waited outside, and one of the things I noticed was a large number of people waiting for their firearm concealed carry permits. Does this resolution change any of the, or this resolution or the law, does it change any of the work that is currently being done by the sheriff's office to determine whether people are entitled to a concealed carry permit and whether or not they have to pay a fee for that, and then there's some sort of check to see if they are eligible to get a concealed carry permit? Does this, does this change the regulation of firearms use, i.e. concealment, does it change anything regarding that facet of firearms use?
I don't know specifically what this legislation speaks to in the CHL environment. I haven't, honestly, haven't taken the time to read those components.
Okay, well, it just got signed.
Yeah.
It's brand new.
It is, and I haven't looked at that specific component related to CHL, and I haven't heard of anything that specifically changes what we do at the sheriff's office in that process.
At least at the present time, you would not envision this changing anything regarding your current work dealing with the issue of firearms regulation?
Yeah, until I, I've heard a reference that there's some CHL language in this, I need to go look, and I can't respond to the question until I have a chance to see if there is or isn't.
There was a Fox News article saying that Sheriff Daniel in Josephine County, quote, "would not enforce this law." Is that the same as, we don't have enough money to enforce the law?
You know, I don't know, I'd have to ask him that question. I think...
You're not taking that view, though?
I'm not taking a policy position that we, by policy, we're going to prohibit our staff from enforcing this. It's a practical matter for us, is that we don't enforce a lot of laws that are provided by the State of Oregon. We only have 20 hours of on-duty presence. When we are on duty, we have three deputies for 115,000 population. The calls for service our deputies go to are in progress, usually person crime, if not person crime, it's felony property crime in progress, and they go from radio call to radio call. They don't have the discretionary time to even work traffic enforcement, which is why our fatality rate in Lane County remains second to first in the State of Oregon. There's a lot of things we don't do. This will fall into that category just because it's not an imminent threat to persons or property if this was to occur and be a crime under the new legislation.
Do we know if the legislation allows us any flexibility in the way we collect fees related to the sales of these firearms in the same way that we collect fees for the concealed carry permit seeker?
I really haven't explored that side of it. When I looked at the language on this bill, it was from a law enforcement eye, what is the crime? What are the elements for a crime to occur under this legislation? And how would it be enforced? And what would be the impacts of that on people possessing firearms? The fees and the costs and those pieces, I haven't seen anything in my review of it that... that says we're going to make money on it or we're going to mitigate our costs in doing it.
Is it also an unfunded mandate, in a sense, on the state? The state trooper, the state government, in the legislature passing this legislation that state troopers obviously enforce state law?
Well, I guess I take a little exception with the state definition of unfunded mandate. I think anytime an entity gives you or I direction to do a specific task that's ordered by law and there's no funding to cover it, regardless if it doesn't rise to a minimum level of X tens of thousands of dollars, if it costs me $5 to do it and you're mandating I do it, that's an unfunded mandate unless you give me a $5 bill. So, simple answer is yes. You know, you heard from what the state definition is, I don't know how to argue that.
Yeah, yeah, well, that came up after it became clear that they weren't going to use a actual one cent or $5 definition. They were going to, it's going to have to be more than a little, so, good. Are you favoring the resolution or either or none, or just taking the view that you're the sheriff and you have plenty of other things to do besides coming over here and helping us pass non-binding resolutions?
I'm finding I have plenty of things to do as sheriff, but I am supportive of the resolution. I think it's important that we affirm our constitutional protections, both the state and the federal level. And if this bill, I will agree that there is a need for change in our firearms rules of who obtains firearms in certain categories, and mental health is certainly one. This legislation doesn't do that. If there is a way we could truly keep firearms out of the hands of criminals, I'd be all for that. I'm not sure how we'd do that, because all they do is commit another crime to get another gun. This doesn't change that. So, for those reasons, I think it's one more layer of resistance to lawful control and possession of firearms. And I, you know, so I certainly think this is an appropriate position to take to reaffirm our oaths to protect our constitutional rights, and this is one, and I agree with Commissioner Forrest's comments. This isn't necessarily one that stands out above the rest for me, but it included is the Second Amendment in that reaffirmation, so.
Did you read the Register Guard today? They had us suggested a resolution for us to.
I did, I read through that, and then I didn't take the time, once back at the office, to compare it to the county prepared resolutions. I'm not sure how different it was.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So, I'd like to address a few things, you know, and one is that I have to agree with Sheriff Trapp, you know, whether an unfunded mandate is 99, one thousandths of a percent of our overall budget versus one percent, one hundredth of a percent, that difference that the state does the test on what an unfunded mandate is? You know, that's a very, you know, just because you don't rise to that $1 amount, it's still an unfunded mandate in my mind. They pass a law, it's going to require local resources without the revenue and the funding to enact that law, it's an unfunded mandate. Whether it's $5 or one hundredth of a percent of our $600 million general fund, I mean, all funds budget, you know, that's, you know, it's still an unfunded mandate to me. You know, I'm more than willing to amend the word especially to including. I don't think that's a real issue for me, as to are in the third whereas, so it sounds better. There's even a comma missing from our Second Amendment recitation in the resolution compared to what's in the actual Bill of Rights, so we need to slip a comma in there. So, I have no problems with those particular things. One of the things that we do, are doing by passing this resolution, you know, is reaffirming our commitment to the Constitution, similar to what we did when we passed the Anti-National Defense Authorization Act, Sections 1021, 1022, and Definite Detention Resolution. There are times when we need to let our legislators and bodies that are above us, the state and federal level, know that we, as representatives of Land County, the 350-plus citizens here, believe certain things are important and constitutional. Part of that is in Senate Bill 941, and part of that is an unfunded mandate, and basically all were, the only references in there to Senate Bill 941 are not to its efficacy or anything, basically that we are not going to allocate county funds for implementation enforcement, because those funds we just passed to Budget and Budget Committee are already allocated to other efforts. We don't have money sitting around, and if you guys remember passing that budget, all of the reserve funds were at the bare minimum requirements. I don't think there was reserve funds sitting there that we had an extra bunch of money sitting around that we could transfer money out of reserve necessarily to cover this cost. And the fact that, you know, even with extensive lobbying personally up there, we were basically ignored. The 20, what was it, 23 counties that passed resolutions, we didn't pass one. But, simple things like removing the emergency clause, the same legislature that passed a motor voter law that was because they felt voting rights were so important, tacked an emergency clause on a bill to prevent the voters from exercising their right of We asked about destruction of records, because one of the concerns about this particular bill is it becomes a de facto gun registry, which is a pretty heavy infringement on your rights under the Constitution and the state Constitution. That fell on deaf ears. There's a, quote, "five-year" limit for records, yet there's no provision for auditing that they were actually destroyed or never shared with another agency. Each record's given in a unique identifier by the computers at OSP and will live in their Ethernet, and we all know that, you know, the Secretary of State's office was able to keep their records secure, not, you know. How much is that registry of people making those transactions, the lawful ones that choose to go to get a background check, going to end up being shared with every agency possible, leading to future gun confiscations? Because there was an additional bill that was going to allow the courts to remove guns from somebody that had a court order against them for misdemeanor domestic violence issues as far as a protection order, which, when you get into a divorce case, those get sworn out all the time, whether or not you really have an issue or not. They're very easy to get a restraining order in today's world. So, it is, you know, we weren't listened to at all. And this is an expression of our support of our citizens' constitutional rights. We were in court today talking about other rights, our free speech rights, our rights to assemble, all of our rights are important. But I think it's important for this board to affirm that particular right at this time because the legislature has chosen to ignore us on amendments that would have made the bill better, and also unfunded mandates. And I don't think it will harm Land County to do so. I think it's sending a clean, clear message to the legislature, who has not finished their budgeting process and could choose to allocate funds at this time, and increase the funding to state police. Because I've looked over the records of their monthly determinations of what background checks were actually bounced and how many were actually investigated, and their percent investigation is almost nothing at this time, because they don't have the resources in their existing system to investigate background checks that come up negative. So, I think it's an important message we send to legislature. I think it's important that we pass the second resolution that includes where we're not going to take county monies from other programs that we've already allocated to support a bill that our sheriff is telling us is ineffective. So, with that, I have no further comments. Commissioner Sorenson.
I was going to say, it seems like we're kind of mixing things here. One is, are we trying to pass a resolution that says we support the Constitution or parts of it? That's one option. One option is, we don't like the bill that the legislature passed, the governor signed, and we want everybody to know that. Another would be, there's a state law that says there's a new requirement or opportunity for enforcement, and we're not going to be using any county funds to enforce that. Another one would be, you pass a law that requires that, that these types of sales are illegal, but you didn't provide any money. Could you please provide the money? I'm not really sure what this is getting at, and so there's a whole bunch of different things in here, and I guess I would say, one way to do this is to maybe go down some of these issues. I mean, one of them clearly is the meaning of whether we're going to change any policies we're currently involved in that infringe upon or change a purist version of what the Second Amendment's about. So, that's why I was asking the questions about the current work that the Sheriff's Office does in taking these applications for permits. That seems to fly in the face of a view of the Second Amendment that it involves a liberty right, a particular right that somebody has that can't be taken away from, you know? If someone's convicted of a crime, the next day, they can, from their jail cell or when they get out, they can talk all they want, because their First Amendment rights aren't taken away from them when they're, as a result of being convicted of a crime. But some people view the Second Amendment as being equal in the concept that, no, you commit a crime and you can't have a gun anymore. Well, not everybody takes that view. I personally take the view that was expressed by Justice Earl Warren when he was Supreme Court Chief Justice, appointed by, I believe, President Eisenhower. One of the greatest pieces of fraud, I repeat the word fraud on the American people by special interest groups that I've ever seen in my lifetime, the real purpose of the Second Amendment was to ensure that state armies, the militias, would be maintained for the defense of the state. The very language of the Second Amendment refutes any argument that it was intended to guarantee every citizen an unfettered right to any kind of weapon he or she desires. That isn't the current version of it. I think that we have seen some, most gun legislations upheld, but we have seen some gun legislation not upheld. But my point being that it's not an unfettered right in the way that the First Amendment usually is interpreted. And so, you know, what are we getting at here? We don't like the legislature passing this bill? You know, if that's the purpose of this resolution, let's just have a straight up or down vote on Senate Bill 941 after it already passed, you know? Is it to denigrate the legislators who voted for it and assist in the effort to get them recalled? Several of the legislators who voted for this bill are subject right now to recall, some right here in Land County. And so, are we trying to weigh into a political process of helping fire up the people that want to recall these legislators? And why are we doing this now? And I guess I'm still more and more troubled by what I'm hearing. Are we trying to say we support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon? Well, let's make a simple resolution saying that. See, what are we really trying to do? To me, it's pretty unclear, and it looks more and more like it's getting into the politics of this particular bill that's already passed, and people don't like it. And I get that people don't like laws that get passed. I don't like some laws that get passed, but what are we doing here? Are we spending the public dollars debating whether we like or not like the fact that a majority of our representatives, a majority of our senators, and the governor signed a bill into law? Is that what we're mad about? So, we, to me, it's getting murkier as we get into this, and I don't know what other business we have to do today, but it seems like this is not as important as doing the business we're here to do. Now, I get it, if there is something specific that's requiring us to do something, I personally would be in favor of a letter saying, this might cost us money. Are you going to appropriate money for it? I'd be in favor of that, because that, sounds like that would mesh with what the sheriff said about the specifics of Senate Bill 941 and the impact that it has on our Sheriff's Office. But throwing in all this broader, bigger sounding language, I'm not sure it really gets us to making a decision that's going to really matter. It's going to be a non-binding resolution.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, on the second resolution, so Mr. Dingell, this is something that was passed by the state legislature. As Commissioner Bozovich pointed out, Chair Bozovich pointed out, it has an emergency clause, so it can be referred, signed by the governor. My question to you then, by, if we were to support this resolution, my question is really centers around the legalities. So, you had the legislature passing a law, signed by the governor, and in a sense, we're suggesting that we wouldn't enforce it by suffocating it due to lack of funds. Is that something that is legal? Can we legally go down that road, you know? Or do we suggest maybe supporting something where we engage the association of where you can counties by bringing something up to the legislature stating that there are several counties in the state that are, that financially are unable to enforce this law you presented? I think one of the issues here is the fact, we've heard, and I got to tell you, I've heard directly from, I'm not going to say their names, but we'll just say prominent legislators here in the motor voter bill, money will be there. I haven't seen it. I look forward to it. Maybe it will. I have no idea at this point in time. It's the same here. No dollars available for local government. So, I guess from a legal standpoint, can we, as a county, say we are not going down this road to enforce it? Or we're just going to suffocate it financially, therefore, it can't be enforced?
I've been asked this question. Well, first of all, this is a resolution, so it's not an order. This board unanimously, in your budget, refused to, as, because I got that number from Mr. Gardner, you, as a board, voted to refuse to enforce 1,800 provable felonies. You did that just a couple of weeks ago. You knew full well, Mr. Gardner, I sat here when he told you that because of the way that the money that was being appropriated and the budget you approved, he told you, I won't prosecute 1,800 provable felonies. So, yes, you can do that. And as near as I can tell, you've done that virtually every year since I've been here because you've had to make those kinds of choices. There are laws on the books that you knowingly and intelligently voted not to fund or provide resources to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll just answer Commissioner Sorenson with, the resolution speaks for itself, and it basically does what it does. It basically does what it does, which it basically states that we're not going to expend county funds for the implementation enforcement of 941, and we reaffirm our constitutional rights under both the U.S. Constitution and the Oregon Constitution. I don't think there's much more else to try and confuse or conflate what that resolution actually does. It's, yeah. So we just have to choose which of the two resolutions we wish to pass in the order. As far as, you know, First Amendment rights, you know, are completely unrestricted, I would point to this morning's trial that they aren't unrestricted. You can't yell fire in a crowded theater. And a convicted felon, when upon release, is not allowed to contact many of their victims and speak to them. They don't have the First Amendment right to talk to whoever they want to or speak some things. In fact, that quite often, you know, in the case of sex offenders, they're restricted on a lot of what we consider First Amendment-protected speech in a state. And, you know, we wrote a letter on the National Defense Authorization Act prior to it being re-upped, and we waited till after they took action, passed the bill, and then we passed a resolution expressing our support for the constitutional rights and against the indefinite detention of U.S. citizens. It's exactly where we are with this resolution. Same process. We went up to Salem, tried to get some changes put into the law. We weren't effective. Now the law's been passed. Now we're making a statement about our objections to the law. So, you know, for folks that don't think that that's the correct process, then we probably shouldn't have done our NDAA resolution either, National Defense Authorization Act, for those of you at home. So I feel that this is, you know, an appropriate response, something that was worth taking up the board's time, and I'm apologizing to the folks from Public Works right now because we're behind our agenda. We'll get to you momentarily. But I'm going to ask the board if there's somebody that wants to make a motion relative to one of the--
I would like to speak prior to any motion.
Sorry. Okay. Thank you, Pat.
You know, Commissioner Bozovic, you've settled some of my concerns regarding the upholding my oaths and swearing to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, domestic and private. Those are settled in the first resolution that has been prescribed. The second one goes a little bit deeper than I'm very comfortable going right now, specifically naming the Senate bill and specifically saying that we will not adhere to the law that has been passed. So I'm a yes on the first resolution. I'm probably a no on the second one.
Well, I want to be clear, we're not saying we won't adhere to the law, we just won't allocate county funds to implementation enforcement of the law, which we do constantly right now with multiple laws of the state.
I believe that an addendum specifically regarding the fiscal nature of the law that was passed would really satisfy my concerns about the law that was passed more than putting it in with a resolution that really is regarding the Constitution of the United States, not regarding action of the Oregon Legislature. And I believe that action of the Oregon Legislature should be held separately from our, from our supporting the Constitution of the United States. I think that, I think it's two separate issues, and I'd like that to be a divided question. So if the first, if the first resolution is the one that receives a motion, you will find me voting yes on it. If the second resolution receives, gets a motion in the second, you will find me voting no on it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. In trying to listen to the comments, I appreciate Mr. Dingell. I called and talked to him this morning and discussed my concerns about discretionary immunity, our inability to prosecute or even, you know, implement, I guess, this bill into our, our system, or this law. And so there was a couple of things. It's clearly stated in here that we currently are prosecuting over 1,800 viable felony crimes currently, and this is, if it was, somebody was to receive a violation under this law, it's my understanding that's even a lower level violation. So it's clear that, you know, we don't have the resources to prosecute this. So a couple of thoughts in listening to the conversations here. In trying to address the especially I had originally said including, but I think that it would be better if it said including, but not limited to the right to keep and bear arms. And in item number four, just to clearly state that Lane County will not expend any county resources for the implementation and enforcement of Senate Bill 941, I think it would be better to state that Lane County is unable to expend any resources on the implementation and enforcement of Senate Bill 941 as it has been passed without any resources to implement it. I think that that clearly states that we just don't have the money to implement that, and it's not whether or not we are or aren't going to follow the state law and enforce it, it's just that we don't, we just physically, it's impossible for us to. And I think, you know, I don't know if that gets anybody any closer to stating that, but I think it needs to be clearly stated that there's a real disconnect between Salem and Lane County, or the county government and the plight that we're having to deal with. And it's a disconnect at the federal level. We got folks that, you know, at the federal level that aren't upholding their obligations under the current laws, and then we have Salem passing laws that, you know, give us the authority or mandate to implement them, and we don't have the resources to do that. And, you know, we use the process, we refrain from, you know, taking a stand ahead of it, use the process. I know that Commissioner Bozovic and others went up and testified, shared their concerns, had private conversations with the legislature, and quite frankly, they weren't at all valid. A couple of years ago, I think this, you know, this real effort started around the fact that we had a mentally ill person kill Eugene, a police officer, Mr., Officer Kukon. This really kind of started from that process, and we were supportive as a board. But as was stated earlier by our sheriff, this law doesn't do anything that could have changed that outcome, or most likely would change that outcome. So I think it's incredibly unfortunate that we have folks up there that are that disconnected from the real on-the-ground implementation of bills. And I believe it's important that we make the statement that Lane County doesn't have the resources, and go ahead and keep piloting on there, but I hope you don't expect us to have any meaningful impact without sharing some resources down to have things implemented. So I don't know if there's support to adjust the item number four on the second resolution to basically say that Lane County is unable to expend resources on the implementation of enforcement of Senate Bill 941 as it's come down with no, you could state that it's an unfunded mandate. And then I think that addressing Commissioner Farr's concern with the first, therefore, that especially the right to keep if we had it including but not limited to the right to keep and bear arms. I'm trying to get to yes here because I do agree with the sheriff, I think it's, and my constituents, I mean, quite frankly. Unfortunately, I was unable to access my emails yesterday, because we have this great system that when your password is timed out, you can't access your account. So I'm away from the office, unable to change my password, and so I get to work here early this morning to access and read approximately 100 emails from individuals yesterday specifically for this item. And it means a great deal to me when individuals make comments and they're specific. It was pretty clear, the people that took the time to share their concerns, and almost every single email that had concerns with this, with this item being unconstitutional, took the time to phrase it in their own words. And then I received a smattering handful of folks that just forwarded a formal email, basically, don't, don't support Commissioner Bozovic's drafted resolution. And for my constituents, and there was a lot of my constituents that emailed me, this is incredibly important to them, and, you know, I feel an obligation as a representative of those folks to share their concerns.
Thank you. And I think, in the spirit of trying to get to yes, I'm happy to do the, is unable to.
I just wanted to ask, a follow-up to what Commissioner Stewart just mentioned, and that is, in the, one of the two proposed resolutions, the paragraph is, Lane County will not expend any county resources for the implementation and enforcement of Senate Bill 941. I guess a couple of questions. If that's factual, then that isn't a, that isn't a matter that really pertains to immunity on the part of Lane County. If I read it, Lane County will not expend, as opposed to, Lane County will not expend. Okay, one is, one is a statement that we're not going to comply with the law, we're not going to spend. On the other hand, another is factual, that, hey, we just don't have it, and we're not spending it. And I wonder, is that relevant to a determination of immunity on the part of the government when the government's told to do 50 things, 45 in one direction by one government, and five in the other direction of another government, and it doesn't have the money to do any of it, and something bad happens, someone sues us, and we say, hey, wait a minute, we're like in the middle of all this, we don't have the resources, we didn't have the resources, we made a conscious decision based upon all of the other things we have to do and how we want to spend the money. Is that paragraph, or the one that Commissioner Stewart was getting ready to write there, does that solve the immunity issue where some victim says, and you didn't even spend the money that could have prevented X harm, and we're being sued in--
I don't think, I don't think the wording is, given the context of this discussion, I think it's clear that the county is making a choice, just like, for example, anyone who believes that they were victimized by the, the board's failure to provide resources to the district attorney's office to prosecute the 1,800 cases. I mean, to me, it's, based on what I've heard here today, it's very clear that there's, based on what the sheriff has said and the discussion back and forth, that there aren't, that you're making a choice in terms of, because you would also, implicit, and I think the way that that, that number four is intended to read, is implicit in that is that you're not, is you're not, you're making the choice not to take other, you'd have to unfund something else to fund that. Does that make sense? So you, for example, you'd have to perhaps not prosecute, you know, take some money away from the district attorney's budget and not prosecute additional cases to investigate this, or the same thing with the sheriff's office. That's the way that I read that.
Does, does the language, the way it's written in, not raise any discretionary immunity problems?
It doesn't read, for me, as the attorney, it doesn't read, it doesn't, not, not when you read the resolution as a whole, because it specifically references the, the public safety system and the other unfunded aspects of it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to attempt to make a motion, if you don't mind. I would move approval of the second resolution, proposed resolution, in the matter of supporting the Second Amendment rights with the following corrections, additions, or changes. Under the first whereas, we need to add a comma after the word militia. Under the third whereas, I'd like to substitute the word R-A-R-E to replace the word as in the second line. In the eighth whereas, add the Y to the word county, so it's the Lane County government. And under the therefore, now therefore, language in the first one, that replaces especially with the word including, but not limited to the right to keep and bear arms. And under the fourth item, that Lane County, that it should read, that Lane County is unable to expend any county resources for the implementation and enforcement of Senate Bill 941, as it is an unfunded mandate.
Go to the second.
I will second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Commissioner Lichen and Farr.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. And Commissioner Stewart, appreciate the, in particular, the number four, unable instead of will not. I think that that sends a, it's an important message, the fact that, hearing from Sheriff Trapp and Mr. Kyler, but Sheriff Trapp in particular, that it's going to be very challenging for us to, to expend the resources on this. And also, I just wanted to also mention really quickly, I've known Commissioner Farr for a long time, you know, 20 years at least, if not longer. And one thing I did appreciate was his, and how passionate he was about the different things that he's upheld. He just showed me real quickly the fact that this is a gentleman who was born in England and is now a United States citizen, and I must tell you that, that is an important message. He's done something that none of us up here have done, and that is, in a sense, here's the country where he was born, that I will renounce my citizenship there and become a citizen of the United States. I really appreciate that, the fact that that much passion was involved in that. But I believe, believe the, what Commissioner Stewart has proposed here as the different amendments to this, I'm comfortable with. I think that this sends a message that probably we should have sent earlier, but I think the fact is, we feel like there are so many different laws being passed in Salem this time around that do not have funding available for local government, and it puts us in such a pinch moving forward. So Commissioner Stewart, thank you for those, and I will, I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. I thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Stewart, for your rewording of the second resolution. I'm still not, you know, particularly happy with it. I wish if we had a statement to make about the legislature's propensity to passing unfunded mandates and telling us to do things that we cannot simply afford to do, because they are, you know, I've been in that building, and once you're in that building, sometimes it seems like the rest of the world doesn't exist. And quite often, when you look from the outside into the building, you say, don't they know the rest of the world exists? And that really is the case when they're telling us to do something that we simply cannot afford to do. I like making that statement, I just wish it didn't have to be a part of this resolution. The resolution is long, there are a lot of whereases, there are a number of, there are for, there are fours, and anybody sitting in a chair, sitting at home, watching on TV, could find all kinds of reasons to say, well, what about this? Well, what about that in your resolution? And I could probably do the same thing. In fact, I know I could sit here and pick this resolution apart 100 different ways. That being said, I believe this resolution has affirmed that we are committed to supporting the Constitution of the United States. It also makes an additional, in my mind, a little bit unfortunate statement to the states, to the state legislature, that they're telling us to do things that it's, that they have no business telling us to do because we simply cannot afford to do it. Therefore, it's a law that's going to be on the books with no teeth at all. We don't need laws with no teeth. We need laws that really cause us to behave as citizens a certain way. So I wish we could keep this separate. I'm a yes on this. You brought me to a yes on it, Commissioner Stewart. And the reason I am is because I will and always shall support the Constitution of the United States. If this was on the, any amendment but the 18th, I'd probably be a yes on that too, although I'd probably pick it apart as well. But, but the fact is, I'm a yes on it. The legislature should pay attention to the fact that Commissioner Sorenson and I both were in that building. The air has not changed since 1936, when that building was completed. were in that building, the air has not changed since 1936, when that building was completed. You're still breathing the same air, and that's not going to go away, I guess. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And on this motion to approve this resolution, I will be voting no. And part of that is because we are passing a resolution about a bill that has gone through the legislative process, gone through the introduction and the hearing process, House, Senate, final passage, governor signing it, it becomes a law of our state. And yet, the resolution seems to imply that it is unconstitutional, because it provides for a regulation of sales of guns. While we have lots of laws in Oregon and federal that regulate the sales of guns, they have not been ruled unconstitutional, they have been ruled constitutional under America's Second Amendment, and under Oregon, in the case of Oregon laws, under Oregon's law. So, to imply that this law is unconstitutional is wrong. Also, to say that we're not going to spend any money to enforce this, when we don't even know the legislature has finished the legislative session, and we're going to, like, shove it in their face and say, "See, we're not going to spend any money on this," when in fact, we don't really know what the benefits of this legislation might be. Instead, the Board adopts the absolutist view on the Second Amendment, not the, I would say, blended view that our current constitutional authorities have adopted. I don't think that's a good idea. I don't need to be reminded about what my oath is, I've already taken many oaths, and I don't need to be reminded about what my oaths are. I also believe that it's important for us to say it the way it is. We have many unfunded mandates. The legislature doesn't give us enough money to deal with public health, they don't give us enough money to deal with elections. Are we going to not have public health or elections? Public health is pretty important, elections are required, and we're going to do it whether they give us enough money or not. So, to me, to say that we're not going to do something that's the law of the state really invites something I don't think we want to invite, and that is, the perspective that because a legislature, or a court, or a legislative body has made a decision that somehow we don't have to do it. And to me, that's wrong. Also, I think that the whereases of this are worth looking at, because instead of talking about this issue in a more civilized way, in a more appropriate way, in my view, we're not really talking about the extent to which gun violence and the use of guns in crime, and in suicide, and other things totally dwarfs what is going on in other countries in the world. We have problems in this area, and instead of acknowledging those problems, and saying we're going to try to do something about them, what we do in fact is succumb to the special interests that want us to pass a harsh Second Amendment-only kind of resolution. So, for these reasons, I think it's a resolution without much influence, it certainly is a statement of the majority of the Board of Commissioners, I'll give you that, but as far as its value to stating public policy, you know, we've had the Second Amendment since 1791, I'm a supporter of the Bill of Rights, including the Second Amendment, and I don't need to be reminded that we have a constitution.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, I feel I need a response. You don't need to give me anything, Commissioner Sorensen. I would not accept it if you offered me anything at this point in time regarding this. The fact is, if I thought that this resolution stated that I believed that the Senate Bill 941 was unconstitutional, I wouldn't vote for it. It doesn't say that. It says it will support the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. It doesn't say 941 is unconstitutional, while it does state some specific things about 941. Ultimately, that's going to be, it's not going to be, it's going to be not your decision or my decision as to whether or not it is or is not unconstitutional. And the second is that regarding will not enforce the law, we're not saying we will not enforce the law, we're saying that we cannot enforce this law. And, yeah, we could write an entire list of laws that we can't enforce, simply because we don't have the budgetary wherewithal to do so, we could do that, but this happens to be this particular resolution that we're talking about today. So, you're wrong. It doesn't say that Senate Bill 941 is unconstitutional. It says that we support the Constitution, including the Second Amendment. It does not say that we will not address the law, it says that we cannot address the law. Two things that you're incorrect about, Commissioner Sorensen, and you're tirate about that, is off the mark completely, and it certainly is not consistent with the way, the reason that I'm voting yes on this. This is the will of the majority of the Board? Well, you know, it's my particular will, I don't vote with the majority of the Board, I vote my particular will, and I'm incensed if you ever suggest again that I vote a certain way because of the majority of the Board. So, that being said, you know, this is up to the course to interpret, and I really take umbrage when Commissioner Sorensen says things like that, it really bothers me to the core.
So, I'd just like to say that it was an interesting speech from Commissioner Sorensen, the same commissioner that supported the National Defense Authorization Act resolution that starts out, whereas the Constitution of the United States, and the ordinary constitution or basis of our representative democracy, blah, 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 lots of whereases there. One of them that specifically talks about being unconstitutional, and then has a bunch of things where we object to the actual act that was passed and approved by the U.S. House and U.S. Senate, and signed by the President of the United States. Fascinating dichotomy there, Commissioner Sorensen. And, in fact, it was Commissioner Sorensen, was the sole commissioner that kept pushing for us to actually pass an ordinance restricting the use of county funds or any personnel to enforce the NDAA, even though he was being instructed that that might put us in a legal liability situation. So, I just find your speech fascinating and duplicitous at best. You know, I, when I referred this back to the Board, I checked with both Sheriff Trapp and the DA, to make sure there wasn't an issue with them. And I just want to read you the first sentence and the last sentence of the DA's response to me. "As you know, I think SB 941 is unlikely to have any favorable impact on the goals its authors claim to support." That's our district attorney. And his last sentence is, "As a practical matter, this is unlikely to matter in Lane County, as I don't expect to ever be funded at a level which would permit the enforcement of non-victim misdemeanor crimes that represent no immediate community safety risk." So, we've heard from our sheriff, we've heard from our DA, we've heard from a lot of our citizenry. I'm going to be voting in support, and I really appreciate Commissioner Stewart's efforts to get us all to yes. Any further comments? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Measure passes 4-1, with Commissioner Sorensen in opposition. And we are already behind schedule for our advertised public hearings. What I'd like to do is try and take those public hearings very quickly, and then allow us a moment to break for lunch, and I want to ask whether we can postpone the work session back a little bit, till later this afternoon, or is Ms. Cook firmly need us up there in the conference room? We're already ten minutes past the time we originally scheduled for that. I can make it work, I don't know about Ms. Cook. I'm looking towards the sheriff, if he knows whether that's an issue for Ms. Cook, to delay her work session with us on emergency.
I don't have any reason to think it would be a problem.
All right, thank you, because we, due to the court issues this morning, we're running way behind schedule. But I'd like to move on to our public works agenda, and we have a public hearing on Order 1506-0206, in the matter of vacating a portion of right-of-way along Irving Road, County Road 2254, located in the northeast, one quarter of the southwest, one quarter of Section 10, Township 17, south range four west of the Willamette Meridian in Lane County, Oregon. And I believe we have Mr. Baume.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm in here in the matter of the vacation of a portion of right-of-way along the north side of Irving Road, located between the Northwest Expressway and Prairie Road, as shown on Exhibit C of the attached order. Lane County Right-of-Way Services requested that our office process these proceedings so that the subject right-of-way could be included in the sale of a Lane County-owned parcel. The inclusion of this right-of-way would add approximately $14,452 to the estimated sale price. The entire proceeds of that sale, if ultimately approved by the Board, would be redistributed back into the road fund. The right-of-way was acquired by Lane County through condemnation of a 6.55 acre parcel for, to be used for a discontinued mid-1990s road improvement project that included an overpass and frontage road over the Northwest Expressway. At that time, approximately 0.8 acres of that condemned parcel was converted into right-of-way, a portion of which is proposed to be vacated today. If these proceedings are approved, Irving Road would still maintain 70 feet of right-of-way adjacent to this proposal. The Surveyor's Office has provided all postings, mail, and legal publications, we've received a couple of comments from Century Leak and Northwest Natural Gas, and our office plans on retaining an easement for all of those facilities. So, in conclusion, Lane County recommends the approval of this order.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on Order 1506-0206. Is there anyone signed up to testify? And is there anyone in the room that wishes to testify on the public hearing?
It's your chance.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-06-02-06.
Second. It's been moved in second, and any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That moves us on to our second public hearing, Order 1506-0207, in the matter of surrender of a portion of West Sixth Avenue, County Road Number 870, to the City of Junction City, in 1504-3131, and 1504-3142, and we have Mr. Baume again.
Okay, our office has received a resolution, Number 1105, from the City of Junction City, formally requesting jurisdictional transfer over a portion of the above-mentioned West Sixth Avenue, all within the city limits, and described in Exhibit A, and shown on Exhibit E of the attached order. The length of this surrender is approximately 1,700 feet. Surrender of this portion of West Sixth Avenue will relieve the county of all future maintenance costs. All legal notice has been provided regarding this matter as required by ORS 373.270. In conclusion, Lane County staff recommends approval of this order.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Anyone signed up, or anyone present which is testifying this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion, or?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of Order 15-06-02-07.
Second. It's been moved in second, and any discussion to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I used to work on West Sixth Avenue, Junction City.
Ah, yes. And I think it's a great thing if Junction City wants to take over maintenance of one of our roads, seeing we are having a little bit of an issue funding our own maintenance, so. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Baume. I think we got two first readings now, if we want to, if we could cruise on through So, in the matter of setting a public hearing, I guess it's not really a first reading, but it's a matter of setting a public hearing, so, Item C, Order 1506-0208.
Yes, the City of Springfield has requested that Lane County surrender a portion of Glenwood Boulevard and East Seventeenth Avenue, located within an annexed portion of the city limits of Springfield. As required by ORS 373.270, it is required that a date for a public hearing be set to allow testimony to be entered into the public record. Our office would like to propose a date of July 14, 2015, at 1:30 p.m. for the public hearing. This date would allow our office sufficient time to provide the proper postings and the manner and timeframes required by law.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-06-02-08, in the matter of setting a public hearing for the proposed surrender of a portion of Glenwood Boulevard, setting the hearing for July 14, 1:30 p.m. at Harris Hall.
Second. Been moved in second, and any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we go move on to Item D, Order 1506-0209, in the matter of setting another public hearing.
Junction City has requested that Lane County surrender a portion of Merrill Iron Road, located within an annexed portion of the city limits of Junction City. As required by ORS 373.270, it is required that a date for a public hearing be set to allow testimony to be entered into the public record. Our office would like to propose the same date of July 14, 2015, at 1:30 p.m. to hold the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-06-02-09, in the matter of setting a public hearing for the proposed surrender of a portion of Merrill Iron Road to the City of Junction City, setting the public hearing for July 14, 1:30 p.m. at Harris Hall.
Second. It's been moved in second, and any discussion to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is an opportunity for me to talk about urban growth boundaries a little bit. You know, back in 1995, I became a Eugene City Councilman, we were looking at adjustments to the urban growth boundary of the City of Eugene, and there's always been a great level of resistance to accommodating the 20-year supply of land for residential, industrial, and commercial. And back then, I said, "Well, you know, if we're not careful, the outlined communities are going to start growing in toward Eugene if we don't take care here in the larger city and the county, if we don't take care of accommodating their growth in residential and commercial and industrial." And at the time, Junction City was about approximately four miles north of where it is now. Now, what happened in the last few years is Junction City has snuck down to the airport, and just as I said, in 1995, the outlined communities are growing in toward Eugene. And if we're worried about urban sprawl, urban sprawl certainly is going to happen in the center of Lane County, the population center of Lane County. The danger has always been the outer communities stretching to kill the green belts in between them and us. And the green belt wasn't killed by Eugene growing, the green belt was affected by Junction City growing toward Eugene. So, now, if you drive out to, past Fiddler's Green Golf Course, right past Fiddler's Green Golf Course, Metta View Street Road is there, Metta View Avenue, right there is where Junction City begins, you're entering Junction City, something like four and a half, five miles later, you're past Guaranty Chevrolet, which used to be on the edge of Junction City. So, if we're worried about urban growth boundaries, and if we're worried about the expansion of the City of Eugene, the City of Springfield, and the tight urban growth that we already maintain here where the population center of Lane County is, take a look at Junction City, worry about that, worry about the fact that outer, smaller communities are not disinterested in expanding their urban growth boundaries to include the things that they want inside of their urban growth boundary, rather than allow it to occur outside of their urban growth boundary. The hospital that is in, inside of Junction City is their urban growth boundary. Originally, we were having that discussion in 1995 and 1996, about how do we, as a City of Eugene, control how that hospital is built, since it's going to be in Eugene? Well, guys, the Eugene City Council, everybody working on Eugene's urban growth boundary today, the hospital's not in Eugene. Junction City grew toward Eugene to accommodate that hospital. So, that's a danger of not taking care of our land supply here inside our existing urban growth boundary inside of the, in the population center of Lane County. What's going to happen is what you see in Junction City, it's a danger, and it's something that really has come to pass. Sorry for taking the time to say it, I started talking about this, boy, it's been 20 years ago now that we started talking about this.
Yeah, Junction City, the fastest-growing city in Lane County, according to the most recent population estimate. recent population estimates by University of Portland, or Portland State, sorry. So any further discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So I think that finishes up our public works. Thank you, Mr. Bamae.
Thank you.
We skipped over agenda team requests, so we could get Mr. Bamae on his way. I want to handle that, and then we can break for lunch, and we convene as the work session. So are there any agenda team requests? So I have one I'd like to get head nods on, and that's to have a discussion of funding options available to the board for both the general fund and road fund. Seeing we had a significant discussion about our FY '16-'17 budget at our final budget committee meeting, everybody understands that we are going, that we're looking at not only the $7 million in cuts we may need to make to the general fund, that there will be additional cuts in the road fund, because the cuts in this budget really were only for half, basically, of the, a year of the vehicle registration fee balance. So I think it's important for us to start discussing our options and our plan rather than waiting. And, you know, we've seen, one of the things we've heard is we should have done a gas tax. Is that something we're interested in? We wait to start having this discussion much past this summer, and we've missed an opportunity for anything on a November ballot, then we're looking at May again, and we're in a presidential year and a reelection year. For some of the commissioners, I just want to have an early discussion to see if there's anything we want to advance and not just have us going on autopilot and not look at our options. So if I can get three head nods to put it on the agenda team's list of future agenda items for later this summer.
Mr. Chair, I know that you asked this. I'm, at this point, going to wait for, I'd like to see what Monsieur Mokhaiske brings to us with updates we've talked about at the budget committee meeting, to have a work session probably after July. I'd kind of like to know, understand the lay of the land. I'm, want to be sensitive to the fact that, I understand we have budget problems here, but I also understand that our citizens are having a hard time paying for something, and I'm not essentially quite ready to dive into what do we want to try next conversation. I want to understand what we're looking at, want to understand where the legislature finishes out in July, what their budgets are, you know, maybe a miracle will happen and a transportation bill will get passed. But I don't want to speculate on whether it is or isn't until they're done. So I'd like to understand more where we're at and what we're looking at, instead of, you know, just suddenly now, just plan a work session on it and talk about funding mechanisms. I'm not prepared to do that.
I guess I should be clear, basically, funding mechanisms and budget strategies for the next year, and what we want to do or not do. And I was proposing for it to be later in the summer. I just felt like now's the time for us to say we want to talk about that stuff so the agenda team has time to schedule it and Mr. Mokhaiske has time to prepare. I was assuming it was going to be late July, early August before we had that session. So is there, if there's not three head nods, I'll just let it die. It's fine. Okay, so with that, is there any other agenda team requests or work session requests? So we are, I am going to recess us until 3 o'clock, where we'll reconvene in the Board of Commissioners' conference room. And at that time, we are going to take up, if I can get my page just straight, a work session on the delegation of authority in events of emergency, and we'll be working with Ms. Cook and Mr. Mokhaiske.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to share that we've communicated with the sheriff's office, and if the board would like to push the work session out, you can do that. So they're prepared to do the work session at 3, I believe. Or you can push it out to another date if you'd like to. There's not a time crunch in it happening today. So it's at the discretion of the board.
I think with the fire season already starting to kick up, and just after our discussions about drought a couple of weeks ago, and our work session on incident command structures, I'd hate to let that all get any more stale than it already is with the board members. And I don't know if the board thinks so or not. You know, if we need more than a half hour for lunch, I'm more than willing to go a little bit longer. But my preference would be to deal with it today, then put it off into a future agenda, because we have many more things that we kept, that, as the agenda team knows, seem to all be converging on June as agenda items. I don't know what our future agendas are going to be. So is everybody okay with coming back at 3 to have that work session?
Yeah, I'd like to do it. I scheduled the data for work, and plenty of time, as far as I'm concerned, to deal with the last item.
And I think a half hour is more than enough for me to get something to eat.
I just told my granddaughter someplace close to midnight, so I'm fine.
Okay, with that, then I'm going to recess the board until 3 o'clock, and we'll reconvene in the Board of Commissioners' conference room.